Good evening. I call this March 11, 2025, meeting of the Morrisville Town Council to order. Thank you for those here with us in person tonight, those watching via livestream and those who are watching recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Excuse me. I'd like to apologize on behalf of the town that we're running about 30 minutes late due to technical issues, but we're looking forward to a really good meeting. At this time, I'd like to recognize Officer Ken Kurtz, who is our Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance, sir. This evening, Councilmember Rao will be leading our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. Please, power heads in prayer. Let's take a moment to reflect and come together this evening in gratitude and purpose. As we gather in this chamber this evening, we recognize that March is Women's History Month, a time to honor the incredible contributions of women throughout history, those who have shaped our communities, strengthened our nation, and continue to inspire us today. We celebrate the trailblazers, leaders like Eleanor Roosevelt, Rosa Parks, Justice Ruth Bader Ginsburg, Catherine Johnston, who brought John Glenn from the heavens back to earth, Vice President Kamala Harris, the first female Vice President, and many other women who have paved the way for justice and equality. We also celebrate the voices of everyday women, mothers, teachers, entrepreneurs, and public servants, who build the foundation of our society through their resilience, wisdom, and compassion. Here in our community, we recognize the women who have dedicated their lives to service, advocacy, and progress, from the business leaders who drive innovation to the educators who shape future generations. Their impact is immeasurable. We are blessed to have a majority-female council in Morrisville and are grateful to be the beneficiaries of the wisdom and leadership of Councilmembers Liz Johnson, Vicky Scroggins-Johnson, Ann Robati, and Donna Fender. May we be reminded that when women rise, we all rise. May we continue to support policies and initiatives that advance opportunity equity and justice for all, and may we remain committed to fostering a community where the voices of women are heard, respected, and valued. Let us move forward with gratitude for the past, a commitment to the present, and hope for the future. May we have a great meeting this evening and we also bless our soldiers and troops wherever they may be defending the freedom of our nation and world. Thank you. Amen.
Amen. Thank you. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to share? Okay. Seeing none, is there a motion second to adopt this evening's agenda?
Mayor and Councilman, move that we adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Robati. All those in favor of adopting this evening's agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. There are five items, no, two items, on this evening's consent agenda. FY25 budget ordinance amendments for March and a resolution authorizing a contract for our department SCBA's. Would any member of council wish to pull any item for discussion? Seeing none, is there a motion to adopt the consent agenda?
Still moved.
Second.
Motion from Councilmember Rao, a second by Councilmember Robati. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously seven zero. We have three presentations this evening. Mayor Pretem Garamella will read the First Proclamation, which is recognizing Holy Festival of Colors.
Thanks, Mayor. I have this proclamation recognizing March 22, 2025, as Holy Festival of Colors. Whereas, the Hindu religion has a special holiday known as Holi to honor the coming of the spring, turn a new leaf, and celebrate life with festivities and throwing color powder. And whereas, the town of Morrisville prides itself on honoring its residents, culture, and religion, and making Morrisville a welcoming place for all. Whereas, the Morrisville community has many residents who practice the Hindu religion. And whereas, the residents of Morrisville celebrate the Holy Festival of Colors event on March 22, 2025. Whereas, the Holy Festival of Colors, in partnership with the Morrisville Multicultural Festival, seeks to ensure the recognition of equality among all people as a fundamental aspect of our shared humanity. And now, therefore, the Town Council of Town of Morrisville does hereby proclaim March 22 as the Holy Festival of Colors. Be it further proclaimed, the Town of Morrisville will recognize Holy Festival on Saturday, March 22, at Cedar Folk Community Center, and welcomes the community to join the town for music, dance, and food, and an explosion of color, as it celebrates Holi and urges all residents to learn more about the holiday. At this time, I would like to invite Cindy King, Assistant Parks and Recs Director, to come and receive this proclamation. And Cindy, you may want to tell the timings to of that event.
I have a timer.
Okay.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Councilmember Robati will read the next proclamation recognizing Creek Week.
Creek Week, the most wonderful time of the year. Whereas, the first Creek Week in central North Carolina was observed in the city of Durham in 2009 and is now observed by many local governments across the state. And whereas, in addition to Creek Week, many local governments and organizations across central and eastern North Carolina have conducted major cleanup efforts to remove trash in waterways. And whereas Creek Week is a special week set aside where partnership-affiliated local governments concurrently work together to celebrate and steward local creeks and streams. And whereas this impact is greatly magnified through the collective efforts of additional local governments, organizations, and individuals working together to educate about and protect our waterways. And whereas creeks, streams, rivers, and other waterways support outdoor recreation, fisheries, healthy lifestyles, and safe drinking water supplies. And whereas healthy waterways also support biodiversity, natural beauty, and provide critical habitat for aquatic wildlife. Now, therefore, the Town Council of the Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize March 15 to the 22, 2025, as Creek Week in the Town of Morrisville, North Carolina, and encourages all residents to celebrate Creek Week with the scheduled stream clean drain marking, stormwater runoff 5K, interactive library programs, and educational outreach events. I would like to invite our Stormwater Engineering Manager, Ben Mills, to come up and receive the proclamation.
This year, we have over 23 events, over 100 volunteers. Our market hit 5K, I think we're close to 200 runners, so that'll be a good event this year, and just grateful for everyone's support.
You guys did a great job.
And Ben, people can walk too if they want, right? For that 5K? Okay, excellent. Councilmember Rao will read the last proclamation recognizing North Carolina Arbor Day.
Thank you. Proclamation recognizing March 21 as North Carolina Arbor Day. Whereas, in 1872, J. Sterling Morton proposed to the Nebraska Board of Agriculture that a special day be set aside for the planting of trees. And whereas, this holiday called Arbor Day was first observed with the planting of more than a million trees in Nebraska and is now observed throughout the nation and world. And whereas National Arbor Day is the last Friday of April, and North Carolina Arbor Day is the first Friday following March 15 due to its planting season. And whereas, trees can reduce the erosion of our precious topsoil by wind and water, cut heating and cooling costs, moderate the temperature, clean the air, produce oxygen, and provide appetite for wildlife. And whereas, trees are renewable resource, giving us paper, wood for our homes, fuel for our fires, and countless other wood products. And whereas, trees in our town increase property values, enhance the economic vitality in business areas, and beautify our community. And whereas, the Town of Morrisville is dedicated to making Morrisville a green and environmentally conscious place to live. And whereas, the Town of Morrisville recognizes the value of planting and caring for trees within the community. And whereas, the town will plant native replacement trees along with adding new trees at Shiloh Park in support of further enhancing the town's tree canopy. Now, therefore, the Town Council of Town of Morrisville does hereby recognize March 21, 2025, as North Carolina Arbor Day in the Town of Morrisville, and encourages all residents to celebrate North Carolina Arbor Day and to support efforts to protect our trees and woodlands. Signed by Mayor TJ Colley and our interim clerk, Aaron Hudson. I would now ask our Director of Public Works, Jeffrey Moore, to, Jeffrey Brown, sorry, Jeffrey Brown, to accept this proclamation. Sorry. Thank you.
And also, I want to thank you all for the great work you do for our town. We're so grateful for all that you did. I've been here a very long time, but I thank you all for everything you do. So, thank you, and I want to present to you both this proclamation. Um, I guess.
I'm gonna turn the mic over to Kimberly. Thank you.
Thank you. Well, Town Council is certainly invited to help us plant trees on Friday, March 21. We look forward to seeing you there if your schedules allow. And if any of you would like to add trees to your yards, I encourage you to look up the National Arbor Day Foundation website, and they have an amazing page for Right Tree, Right Place. So please do help us, consider helping us to grow the tree canopy in the Town of Morrisville. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you.
We are now at item nine, administrative reports, which are provided for information only. Does council have any specific questions regarding the quarterly capital projects update? Okay. Seeing none, we'll move on. Next item is public address. Do we have people signed up for public address this evening?
We have one individual signed up. His name is Shereesh Narayan.
Okay. So, for those who have signed up to speak, please approach the microphone stand when your name is called. So, Mr. Narayan, begin by stating your name and residential address and direct your comments to the council. Each speaker is allotted three minutes to ensure everyone has a fair opportunity to share their thoughts. A timer will start after you state your name and address, and a buzzer will sound when your time is up. And that is, looks like that is happening tonight. We appreciate your cooperation in helping us manage time fairly for all participants. Sir?
Good evening. My name is Shereesh Narayan. I live in 803 Willingham Road, Morrisville, North Carolina. So, we all know that. So, basically, I'm here today, we feed a lot of input to the Parks and Recreation. I want to take a moment and give a shout out to Mary Facit and her team. I've been attending their meetings and also at the Senior Center. All the feedback that they're giving them is being implemented, and it's very encouraging for people like me to go and speak over there and see that action is being taken. I also wanted to thank the staff at Kendall Smith and Sarah for bringing in new programs and new engagement. So, these are all being appreciated. Also, we had a request from the Senior Center not to move our location. So, Mary promised us that they are doing some action, and instead of waiting two months, there are meetings held every month now, and people are hearing, and that's very positive. So, I just wanted to give a positive note and thank the Parks and Recreation, and also Councilmember Satish just spoke about the Holy Festival. I don't know if it's a coincidence or not, but so much of recreation activity is being on, the community is being involved. So, we feel very proud and thankful to the council and all members over here for taking care of us. That's all I have to say. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Was there anyone else signed up?
No, Mayor, not this evening. Thank you.
Is there anyone in the audience who would like to speak to this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Even if you didn't sign up, you can do that now. Okay, if you could please approach and put your name and your address there, and then you'll have three minutes, sir? And as we're waiting, as a reminder, we encourage the submission of written comments as well, as they offer a valuable way for community members to share their feedback. We can always be reached at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov.
Hi there. My name's Harrison Kestling, and I live at 402 Mannington Drive. I just wanted to say that I appreciate the town's partnership with the Western Wake Farmers' Market. It's great to explore the market, pick up locally made goods, and see people biking, playing, and composting. I've had the chance to speak with the market's president about my efforts to improve transit here in Morrisville, and she mentioned that a bus stop at the future market location would be valuable. While there is currently a smart shuttle shop stopped at the library, I agree that adding one near the market's temporary location for the next few years would improve accessibility. If and when fixed route service comes to Morrisville, ensuring a stop at the town center will be vital. Speaking of the town center, I appreciate the town's efforts to enhance this area, but I also have some concerns, particularly regarding the widening of Morrisville Carpenter Road. Without specific changes, the area may not be as pedestrian- Without specific changes, the area may not be as pedestrian friendly as it could be. I understand that this is a major thoroughfare, but expanding it may increase traffic demand as studies on induced demand suggest, potentially making the area even less walkable. I envision a truly pedestrian oriented tra- town center, but achieving this may require updates to the Unified Development Ordinance, zoning, and future land use planning, changes that may take time and careful coordination. While I recognize that some road planning decisions involve county or state agencies, I encourage the town to take every opportunity to prioritize pedestrian oriented development. And I look forward to sharing more specific concerns and solutions in the future. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else? Okay. We'll now move on to item 11, which is new items. We have one new item on this evening's agenda. I'll invite David Hacker, Human Resources Director, forward to brief town council on the resolution adopting personnel policy manual revisions. Town council is scheduled to vote on this item at the March 25th meeting.
Lift up a little bit more taller. Good evening. Uh, David Hacker, Human Resources Director. Uh, before you, you have, um, in your packets, a, uh, proposed resolution and a redline version of two particular policies that are being recommended for revision. Rather than going through and reading each of those redlines for you all, I did do a brief summary of each, just to kind of highlight, um, two types of, of changes, really reaffirmations that may be reworded or repurposed, and then new elements or affirmations in the, uh, proposed amendments. The first that you have in front of you is section seven, which is titled Employee Recognition: Years of Town Service Recognition. This essentially, um, is our calculation for service years with the town, um, employment service years. This proposed amendment, um, is inclusive, inclusive, excuse me, of clarity that pro- is provided for the purpose of calculating those same years. It reaffirms awards that will be issued in five-year increments, so that is not a change, that's just a reaffirmation. It reaffirms that all service, including non-consecutive employment, will be used for the purpose of calculating those years of service. So if we have anyone who leaves and re-employs, they get, you know, credit for those serv- those prior service years, even if they're non-consecutive. Um, it reaffirms both part-time and full-time service shall be included for this purpose, uh, for calculation. Uh, and there's no distinction between either, it's, it's simply your totality of years of service. It reaffirms approved leaves of absences, and just as examples, not an exhaustive list, this would be you, Sarah, or, you know, leave for military purpose, or FMLA, under family medical leave, uh, that are not deducted from the totality of their, uh, service calculation. So they're not reduced if they're out on any of those types of approved leaves. And then it affirms that new employees, um, excuse me, it affirms that, and this is a new element, any new employee or any employee retiring from the town of Morrisville, the town of Morrisville, meeting the NCLGERS qualification for retirement, but remains employed, either voluntary or part-time, would essentially restart their calculated service credit. So they're, they're receiving their benefit up to retirement, they're receiving the award associated with retirement, and then they, if they remain employed, either part-time or voluntary, they're starting a service calculation again. Um, and, and that does happen with individuals part-time. We also have some, um, police force members that stay on in a volun- involuntary capacity and are called in for different events and things like that. So we do have that happen. It's infrequent, but it wasn't, um, clear, clearly addressed in the policy, so there was some confusion around that. So we just wanted to make sure it was spelled out well. That essentially summarizes for you all, um, section seven. If there are any questions about that section, or, you know, things I can answer, I'd be glad to do that before moving on to the next one.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, please.
Hello, I just have a question about the calculation for retirement. If someone has a sporadic kind of career where they work in the government, then in private, government-private, and then they're eligible through the years of service, let's say at the town of Morrisville, to retire, they can retire, but then if they want to come back sometime in the future, they can no longer accrue on that previous series of years? And it will never be recalculated to give them more credits for retirement? Because if you start over, five years is probably when you become vested, so you can retire.
Are you asking if-
I'm just trying to understand the language, because I don't understand how you have to start over, because if you've worked for 20 years, retire, and then work another five or 10 years, what is-
So this policy is only applicable to their service credit? So the, the award that derives from this policy is in every five-year increments, we issue, um, like, uh, longevity pay to our employees. So that calculation would restart. There are provisions within their retirement that allow them to earn or not earn based on the provisions of their retirement. For, as an example, an employee that exits and becomes eligible for retirement can only work so many hours in a year if they return to public service. So this policy is not connected to their retirement benefit, only to that award incentive payment that they get for longevity.
Okay, 'cause it, you know, I was trying to read the procedure, and it was not with the full document, I just read the two paragraphs that you had, so it was, the context was confusing for me. So, and I'm sure if you have the entire document, it makes sense, but just the little, you know.
That is correct, yes.
Okay. Um, thank you for that.
Sure.
I appreciate that.
Okay, I don't see any others, you may continue.
Sure. The next section that you have in front of you this evening is section 23, Leave in Inclement Weather. Um, as, as you all know, surprisingly, we've had this, um, pop up quite often this year. So again, as, as these things present and these policies are put into play when operational challenges present, that's when we recognize that there may be need for refining. So in the same regard, uh, the proposed amendment includes clarity provided for the purpose of work directives and/or the application of leave for hours not worked, and related to the eligibility for inclement weather pay, which is a separate subject. So, um, I'll go through those, those high-level kind of comparatives like I did for that first policy revision for you. These updates provide a clear definition for what constitutes a public safety employee, which for our purposes includes police, fire, and public works employees. It provides a clear definition for what constitutes a weather event, which is the ability to safely travel to and from work, and/or impacts the town operations in such ways such as a loss of power, a loss of water, uh, those types of instances. It denotes that the town manager will communicate the start and the end of a weather event to town employees. It amends the policy to include specific provisions for non-typical hours of operation, specifically parks rec- parks, recreation, and cultural resources during weekend hours or hours before 8:00 AM or after 5:00 PM, and that's just one example of non-typical, um, office hours, uh, Monday through Friday, of course. It reaffirms options for impacted employees, which allow them to do several things. First, work remotely, if applicable, and with, and that such options may provide additional opportunities for training, um, work-related events. Make up time within the work week or their defined hours period, because we do have some, um, sects of employees that are part of specific FLSA exemptions, and their, those hours are measured differently. Or use compensatory time, uh, PTO, or vacation, and then as a last resort option, use sick leave as an option. It also, um, essentially allows for those same options for employees who determine commuting during weather is not, when, when a weather event is not determined by the town manager. We did not have that instance happen this year, but it could happen. And those are exactly the same options I just read to you or reviewed for you, with the exception that they would not be permitted to use, uh, sick leave as a, as a last option. Now that would be an instance where a weather event has not been defined, and the individual chooses not to, to come to work because of whatever scenario presented to them. Their commute may be different, it just gives them more of a liberal leave policy, is what we would call it in the HR world, to, to utilize any type or form of available leave outside of sick leave if they feel the need to do so. Um, and then finally, it clearly defines inclement weather pay, which is an award pay, um, for individuals, and the eligibility for that is as follows. A public safety employee who is working during the hours the town facilities are closed due to the defined weather event, or a public safety employee that is required, as directed by a supervisor, to flex hours or work additional hours outside their normal schedule to re- to prepare or respond to a defined weather event, or a non-public safety employee who is required, at the direction of their supervisor, to work on-site during a defined weather event. In addition to those, um, eligibility parameters, it defines weather payment as a one-time issued payment of $250 for each event. Each event has the potential to last up to three, three consecutive days, and of course, that is defined by the, the communication from the town manager that, that a weather event has been implemented. And then finally, um, it affirms a new element, it, that exempt employees are not eligible for inclement weather pay unless otherwise approved by the town manager. That just is a provision for special exceptions. Any questions about the weather and incla- or, excuse me, leave and inclement weather?
Councilmember Robati, please.
Yeah, I just had one question. Where the, um, uh, to, 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 where do we go? Um, I saw something that said that there was a one-time, oh, okay, weather pay will be one payment of $250 per employee for each weather event lasting up to three calendar days of closure. So, is that, that's only for people who are required to work during those days?
That is correct. So the way that, um, the, the determination is made is when the weather event is declared, through that communication from the town manager, human resources put out a roster request to those departments, and as, as I mentioned in here, it could include a non-public safety employee if they were mandated to work on-site. Those departments respond to that roster request with those individuals that were required to work during that period of time, and then that particular pay code is added to the employee's payroll.
Okay, and that's, there's no limit on, I mean, as many, as many times as that happens, they can receive that $250 per weather, or, I guess, $750 per weather event?
It's only, so for three days of consecutive time, it would only be one $250 payment.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not $250 per day, it's per event.
Okay, and then on top of their regular salaries?
That is correct.
Something like a bonus. And what, um, I guess I'm just a little bit concerned, what, what recourse is open to the employee if their supervisor requests that they come in and they don't, you know, they don't feel that they can safely do that, or, um, you know, something, for some reason, they, you know, they, they can't make it, their kids are home from school, something like that. Do, how are we working with the department heads just to make sure that, that everybody's comfortable when they're asked to be on-site?
Sure. So anytime that an employee would make that determination for themselves, I, I'm unaware that that happened this time around. So I, I believe everyone who was scheduled did, did arrive safely. However, if they needed to for any reason, they, they would respond to their call-off procedures just as if they were for any other event. So they would have their available, um, vacation balances, their available sick balance if, if, if applicable to sick, you know, or care reasons, but they would respond to the same call-off procedures and format that they would any other day.
Okay. All right. Um, and so it's, it also says, though, that the maximum weather pay for any individual employee for a single weather event is $500. Does that mean that if the weather event is, God forbid, six days long, that, that's, that's the extent of the-
That is correct. That is the cap on the weather event pay. Um, of course, we hope that we don't have that scenario, but it certainly could present, but that, that is the cap on the consecutive payment. So there could be a three-day period, followed by an additional three-day period, and then a two-day, non-issued weather event period, followed by an additional three-day period. But there cannot be, say, nine days of consecutive weather event-defined pay. There, there would be a break in between the maximum for, that would be two consecutive pays of $250.
Okay, just out of curiosity, why do we have that stipulation?
Um, just to make sure that we have a, a cap that's applied to it. It's, it's really an arbitrary value. Um, it's very expensive every time we issue that defined period, so we wanted to make sure that there was some reasonable, you know, value cap applied. And in comparison, a two-day period for these types of, or a two-day defined period is, is very common. It's the most common period of consecutive pay, having it happen back-to-back.
Okay, but ours is three days.
Two defined periods. So what I mean is, it would be a total of six days in that instance.
Okay. I don't see any, I, I haven't seen a weather event yet in, you know, here that would require more than that. Okay, thank you very much.
You certainly hope not.
Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
So a lot of the weather pay questions were eloquently asked by Councilmember Robati. However, um, if weather pay is offered to individuals that are paid an hourly, um, salary, sometimes in weather events, you don't get relief because the people just can't come in. The, the weather is so bad that, we had a snow event recently, and some people couldn't travel outside of their area. If you're doing a 12-hour shift and you're scheduled for eight, you would be getting, receiving pay for the hours that you worked extra.
Correct.
And you would also receive this $250 stipend.
Correct.
But the stipend does not matter whether you worked your regular shift or an extraordinary shift, correct?
That is correct. So they're getting paid for any hours that they, they work. So in your example, if they stayed over because someone couldn't make it in, and they worked 12 hours, they would receive their regular earnings for that. Of course, if, if that puts that particular employee into overtime earnings, they would receive their time and a half for those hours, just as if it was a normal shift day. Any employee that works any portion of a shift during the time that the weather, the weather event is issued, receives that $250 stipend payment.
So I think that's really important for me to understand, is that when the town manager closes the facilities, and we know that public works, for example, would be out preparing the roads and getting, you know, emergency access, all of those individuals that were on, you know, uh, shift would be receiving the stipend?
That is correct.
Whether it was an hour, or eight hours, or 12 hours, or, okay.
Yeah, during that defined period, and to that point, um, one of the revisions that you see in that particular policy also allows for those individuals who may have come in extraordinarily early, we had that happen this last weather event, so they weren't here when the weather was actually taking place, but they worked extended hours because they were preparing and, you know, dropping brine on the roads and those things, and we wanted to be sure that if those individuals gave extra effort to prepare for those weather events, they also received that award pay, if it was applicable.
I, I think that's more than fair, because some people travel very long distances and won't be able to make it if they waited until the weather turned.
Sure.
So, that makes sense. Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So, this wording around, uh, leave and inclement, inclement weather and, um, inclement weather pay, is this, is that standard? Is it typical? How does, how do we compare to other, um, communities here in the Triangle, or, you know, across the state?
I think, um, if you were to look from a comparative perspective, since COVID, most have transitioned, and I would say this is true, y- you see it in school settings as well, you know, it used to be a snow day was a snow day, now a snow day is a remote learning day. So I think the language that you see in our policy is very in line with the other municipalities in our area, in terms of shifting and allowing for those circumstances that present when things are not safe for people to commute, limiting the number of people we ask to commute, only asking those that are essential to commute, and then, you know, being flexible with employees relative to, you know, remote opportunities if they, if their jobs allow that, learning opportunities if they've had learning that they've delayed because they're on-site, and now this is an opportunity that they could focus those hours of the day on, on that delayed learning opportunity, you know, if there's required learning. Um, and then subsequently, giving that flexibility within the departments to allow employees to make up those hours, different, you know, if they're not here and they're not able to do that work remotely, the likelihood is, is that work is waiting for them, or someone. So allowing, you know, them to make that time up at a different day within that work period, um, allows for that same flexibility, and I would say that's very in line with the other municipalities' policies that I looked at.
Thank you.
Mayor Pretam Garamello, please.
Thanks, David. David, question I have, what is the difference between this and overtime? Question I have, what is the difference between this and overtime that the employees work on special events?
On, did you say on special events?
Yeah, like, you know, July 4th or Spring Fest, there's so many people, like, are in, I see like a whole army of us.
Sure. So that, any of those additional special events that are worked fall under a completely different policy with different parameters. I don't have that in front of me to give you the exact quote or, you know, payouts or things like that, but it's very similar in that it's considered extra time, right? It's valued time that's not considered in their earnings or their regular earnings calculations. But it's different in that this is specific to an award payment for, and it's a flat value, where, you know, special event pay is driven by that particular policy. It's still additional earnings, so that employee is receiving something additional for performing either at the special event, work duties, or they're receiving additional award pay in this instance for being out during that inclement weather.
So, got it. So just from my understanding, we have overtime or something, right? So assume this is on a weekend, like a weather, and they're working, so they will get their overtime, which is scheduled, and this pay on top of it.
That is correct. If they run into their overtime calculation period, so for typical employees, that's 40 hours, but under specific exemptions under FLSA, it's different for police and fire. There's a 171 value and a 212. So if they run into those hours, individualistically for each employee, then they would receive their overtime rate of pay in addition to the $250 payment.
Got it. It's kind of a one-time pay.
Correct, yeah.
Got it, thank you.
I see no other questions on that section.
Great, thank you.
So we'll hear from you again in two weeks. If anyone has any further questions on that one, please just go ahead and email David.
They would like to know, will we visit this in two weeks?
Oh, yes, sir. I apologize, yes. This will be in your next agenda as a consent consideration.
Okay, sounds good. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we're at item 12, future meetings, events, and resident involvement opportunities. For a full listing of those events, please see our town calendar at www.morrisvillenc.gov. At this time, we're on council comments, followed by manager comments. Councilmember Rao will share first, and will be followed by Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Thank you, just a, just a, hold on. Give me one second. Just a few comments. First of all, I want to wish Sharma, Dr. Sharma, happy 99th birthday last weekend, unbelievable. Big milestone for the Sharma family and the community. I want to thank the Smart Cities Meeting for the special session I attended. I learned a lot about Gartner's presentation, IDC's presentation, and a lot of passion there. So looking forward to continue to work with the committee to make things happen. Just a reminder to the public listening that the All Things Open AI Summit is on March 17th. We'd love to see some people from our, from members of our Smart Cities Committee attend that. It's in the Carolina Theater in Durham. Attended some Ramadan Eid far events, Zakot Foundation, want to thank them for that, and I want to thank Beth Meyers synagogue. Congratulate them for the 150-year anniversary last weekend. And congrats to Wake Tech for another great Wake Tech night program. And finally, I want to thank People's Medical Care for, they do a lot of work, started by Dr. Vinod Jindal, on providing free health care to uninsured, and it's magnificent organization. So I'm hoping we can educate more Morrisville residents about the great work they're doing. So that's all I have. Looking forward to the rest of, a great meeting the rest of the evening. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Garamella.
I have no comments, thank you.
Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
No comments.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
No comments.
It'll be me and then Councilmember Robati. I'm going to break the streak and actually have a few comments. I want to say a very happy birthday, as Councilmember Rao had said, to the inspiring visionary leader, Dr. Sharma, affectionately known as Sharma Uncle. Our community is richer, more exciting place to live because of the leadership of himself and his wife over the years. I'm looking forward to busy weekend with the Stormwater 5K, a litter sweep, and the HSNC Holy. And the following Saturday, our Holy on the 22nd, and we will have our town holy then at Cedar Ford Community Center, as was heard in our proclamation. At this time, Councilmember Robati.
I'd also like to wish a happy birthday to Dr. Sharma. I did not know that he was 99. That's amazing. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
I have no comments.
Okay. Town Manager Zudma.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a few for you. First, I meant to put this into your Friday email and just overlooked it, but wanted to share with you that the Department of Energy has now authorized the town to move forward with the community-directed spending grant for the $250,000 to proceed with solar at M A F C and at the Connector Building. So we have a $250,000 match for that. So we anticipate an RFP going out within the next week or so regarding the installation of solar on the town Connector Building as the first project. That should commence ideally by early May. Public Works staff is working on the design of solar canopies at M A F C parking lot, and then a separate RFP, excuse me, will be issued for that when ready. And then the third RFP will be for the solar on the roof at M A F C. So the expectation is all these could be completed within probably the year, the next six to eight months, but this calendar year. So just want to share that update with you. There've been a lot of, a lot of back and forth on that one, and a lot of BABA issues in terms of buying records, so that waiver's been approved as well. So Public Works staff is ready to proceed with that. Thank you. Second, we have some, as you're aware, vacancies on the MESS committee. So shared some information with you prior to the weekend in regards to where we are with that. So you had two existing applicants prior to us opening that. That was scheduled to close this past Friday, but only had one additional applicant, and you currently have four vacancies. So shared the resumes of the three applicants with you, and so just sort of a decision point now on how you would like us to proceed. So I think you sort of have two options. You can consider appointing some or all of the three applicants we currently have on file. And again, you've got their resumes, and at that point, we can either continue to advertise or we can just appoint as many as three and then wait for the next full recruitment. That would probably start in Bianca late April, I think, with the intention of a summer appointment as sort of the full all-committee recruitment. If we do continue to recruit, right now I've asked to extend it to March 18th because of the Stormwater 5K on Saturday. So we'll have some staff there doing a little recruiting. If they're interested in running the 5K, maybe they're interested in the MESS committee. So we'll share some information there. So that would push us out to the 18th to give those folks a bit of a chance to apply if they'd like to. And then if we were to go beyond that, I would suggest going to March 28th. That would let staff be at the March 22nd events for Little League Opening Day, Community Fire Academy, and the Holy Celebration to, again, do some recruitment at those events as well. The other option you have is don't appoint anybody now and just tell us to continue recruiting, and we'll see if we get more applicants up to as late as March 28th. I would not recommend going past March 28th with this emergency, if you will, recruitment, just because it'll start to put us up against the next recruitment, and when they start to overlap, it gets really challenging to do that. So again, with that, I think your options are, one, consider up to three of the current applicants, and we can stop, or you can ask us to, you can appoint some of those, and we can continue to recruit, or we can just continue to recruit. That's the three, I think, options we have right now, just asking for a little direction on how you'd like us to handle that.
Okay, well, first here from Councilmember, I think I saw, Scroggins-Johnson first, and then Councilmember Johnson. I apologize if I had that backwards.
Well, it's a Johnson, after a Johnson, so we're good. No. So I know that I've talked to you about my opinion. I'm ready to appoint people, but I don't think the rest of the council is as ready as I am. I would think from your suggestions that we leave this period of recruitment open until the 18th. And I'd like to vote on the appointments at the very next council meeting that's regularly scheduled in two weeks. I think also my ask is, I would like staff to reach out to the three individuals that are currently in our, you know, kind of the current selection, and let them know that they're being considered for this committee. But beyond that, I think it's also important to let everybody that's currently either unappointed and waiting or appointed, to let them know there's an opportunity for this committee as well. Some people might want to switch. Have we considered that? Has there been any socialization with the current committees that there's an opportunity to join MESS?
So Bianca has communicated, or has attempted to communicate with all three applicants to follow up. Two have confirmed their interest is still there. We have not yet heard back from the third applicant. Is that correct, Bianca?
That's correct.
So beyond that, we have not specifically reached out to other applicants for other committees. We could certainly do that at your direction. We have emphasized trying to get out on through the website, social media, and other communications efforts next week in Morrisville, et cetera, to share that the MESS committee has vacancies. But if you'd like us to, we could certainly push this out to any of the current waiting applicants that aren't already appointed to a committee.
I think the people that have applied and not been selected, those are our first, you know, reach, and then the second reach is also just making awareness to the existing committees, because they don't always watch all the town council meetings. Some of them might not be aware that this opportunity exists, and maybe they want to try something new. So we probably have people that might want to switch. It would be interesting to see what level of interest we have from that group. But leave it up until the 18th to allow for some of that to percolate. Thank you.
So can I respond to one point and just clarify? So thank you for that feedback. So my only concern is that, just want to be clear, that's going to be a really quick turnaround for voting on your behalf. And so if we get it the 18th, that's a Tuesday. You know, ideally, we're loading that information to send to you in the packet that Thursday. I mean, we could delay that and just present it to you the 25th, but, you know, we would still need to have it back in a reasonable amount of time. I'm just concerned that may not be enough time. I know some of you like to make some outreach and perhaps work on things over a weekend. I just don't want to make it too tight for you to do what process you would like to do in a potential outreach to candidates, but we'll make it work if that's what you want to do.
And I do appreciate that, but this is only one committee, and it's only four individuals. Thank you.
Councilmember Johnson, please.
So I'm going to, I'm going to follow up on that. I would tell you, and you've heard me say this before, and this is probably the third time I've said it publicly, and it won't be the last. I think the most engaged citizens we have are those that are on our current advisory committees. So I would send an email to all of them as well, to let them know and make sure they're aware of this possibility and that we're looking for additional applicants, and ask them, invite them to participate by finding, helping us find those residents that may potentially be interested in serving. So I think, again, the most engaged citizens we have are the ones on our committees, and we should be using them more for all our efforts, not just those related to the specific advisory committees they're serving on. So I would add to all that as well. I am in favor of waiting. I'd probably wait a little longer, quite frankly. I like the idea that we have some really big events coming up, that potentially we could reach those residents that we're not reaching right now through social media or whatever means, other means we're using our newsletter and all that. So I like that opportunity. Holy, there's going to be a couple of thousand people there. Now, whether they're going to come by a table or not, that, I agree, that's a whole nother, that's a whole nother question. But I have, since you have made us aware, Brandon, that there, that this outreach has not resulted in a slew of applicants, I have done more outreach myself, and I have encouraged some folks to apply. So that's why I definitely would like to give them the opportunity, and whatever the deadline, I'd go to the end of the month, but I agree with you. I think beyond that, we're, we might as well wait then for the next period. It'll be too confusing. So I would not go past the month of March.
Sorry, town manager, if I could respond to both Johnsons, that would be great with your approval.
Yes.
Okay, so I did want to caution, not against, but just to inform you that some of the other committees do have vacancies, and per our appointed public policies, we would be reaching out to about 59 individuals that currently serve on the committees and the boards. In addition to that, depending on if there are current vacancies already on those committees and boards, we still have the risk of those individuals switching over or switching committees, and then having to refill another committee or board. So it'll be more of like a roundabout cycle, just a different committee. So just wanted to provide that little snippet to you.
I appreciate that. I would tell you, I'm not worried about that. Some folks, I think we have put on committees that weren't their first priority, and they may, MESS may have been their first priority, and we didn't place them there to begin with. So this is their opportunity to move if they want to. And quite frankly, if somebody feels that they would, they would be a better fit on a different committee, I'd like them to make that choice. I hear what you're saying, you're right, because now we're, we're kind of making it harder for ourselves in the next round. But I think that's okay, quite frankly. I want to make sure people feel comfortable where they are, and that they're contributing. So.
And I definitely understand that. In addition to that, I would say, you know, we're given a couple of weeks to reach out to 63 individuals, also wait for a response, and then come back, have you vote, and then present that information to you. So I'm not sure if maybe we could do a little further than, than a couple of weeks.
So if I could just respond to that quickly, it's like, if you feel like there's people from other committees that have responded positively and you put them on a ballot, you can also let us know what the status of the other committees are, so that we are aware of impact to other committees. So that information is going to be very important, that you bring it forward to us to understand and appreciate.
Yes, thank you.
So the town manager is looking for direction from us. I'll go, and then maybe we'll just go down to the end, and then.
Can I ask one quick follow-up question? I'm sorry for a moment. Councilmember Johnson, just confirming, you would be okay with the 28th as a closing date?
I would.
Okay, thank you.
So I would say the 28th also, but first I want to say, great job on that solar. There's a lot of persistence getting us to that point, so good job. For this outreach, I've seen a lot on social media, so I appreciate you making an effort. Can't make people apply, but I think you guys are doing everything you can.
That's really the comms department. Sorry to interrupt you, but thank you.
Thank you to our comms department. So I'd be okay with the 28th as well.
Okay.
Mayor Pretem Garamella, and then we'll go down that way.
Okay.
Councilmember Rao?
Okay.
Just declare 28th is fine? Okay. Councilmember Robati?
Okay.
And Councilmember Fender?
The 28th.
Do you have what you need, sir?
So just confirming, we will not bring you anyone to consider until we close at the 28th. That gives us the opportunity to do some additional outreach to existing committee members, and also folks that have applied to other committees and not been appointed. It lets us get to Stormwater 5K, and it also lets us get to Holy, to Little League Opening Day, and to the Community Fire Academy.
That sounds accurate.
Which I think is good. It also gives us a little bit more of that time to give you a little more time over a weekend if you need it to consider your ballots. Thank you.
Wonderful, thank you.
Bianca, you have anything else on that, do you?
I don't, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you. So I want to follow up with you. We had talked after retreat about the concept of focusing more regularly on the resident So we had spoken about that, and we had shared that we were talking with our staff about that, and we were going to work on that through the budget process. So as we've started to talk about that, I want to suggest that we would like to use the phrase "community perspective" rather than the resident perspective. What we find ourselves doing, I think, is when we say the resident perspective, then we also say the business and other stakeholders. And I think if we say the community perspective, we're catching that whole group at once. So wanted to just share that with you and make sure you don't have any objection to that. Also, just sharing with you a handout, that this is what will be shared, a version of this where it said resident was shared with our leadership team, but this version with community perspective is going to be shared. community perspective is going to be shared with all of our supervisors in a joint meeting on Thursday. And again, for the public that can't see that, what that speaks to is, it first asks the employee, the leader, the staff member, what is your perspective? Then it asks, what's the manager's perspective? Then it asks, what's council's perspective? And then, most importantly, it asks, what's the community perspective? And so that's helping to develop that mindset for all of us, that there's different perspectives to think about as we try to work through different issues and focus on the community. So just wanted to sort of provide that with you, an update, and happy to answer any questions if you have on that.
I think this is a great step. Mayor Pretend Garamilla.
This is excellent, but will you also add to our strategic plan? Because as one of the issue, one of the points has a community perspective in there.
Yeah, so you'll see that a couple of places. You'll see that, I'm about to talk with you about your budget priorities, so you will see it referenced in there. And then Aaron will be coming to you in just a little while, in the next couple of meetings to begin conversations about the strategic plan. So you will certainly see it there as well. Thank you.
I don't see any other comments on that one.
All right, thank you. So Jeannie is assisting me in sharing another document with you. This was sent to you electronically, but also just want to share it with you. And again, for you and also for the public, when we were at retreat, Jeannie led you through a budget priority or prioritization exercise. Out of that came 10 priorities. You looked at those, I think initially as nine when we first came back, and then we talked in a work session, you gave us some additional guidance. Can I, do we have those to go up there? The screen. Let me, let me talk through it with you. So again, what you see in front of you is essentially the same document that we shared with you in a prior work session. We took your feedback from that. Anything that you see in red has changed a little bit. You'll see the title is prioritizing for Morrisville. Again, we think that's again, about what we're doing with and for the community. Business collaboration is the same. The next one has been changed to the community viewpoint. So again, that talks about that community perspective and it talks about embracing the resident and business perspectives, elevating transparency and other factors there. Still has economic resiliency along with inclusivity. Also, we have updated the, an item to operational excellence. So that talks about ensuring outstanding reliable services, investing in our staff, succession planning, and also leveraging technology advances. So we do that where we don't necessarily have to have staff if we can help it. And then under quality of life, we have added, based on conversation with you, maintain and expand parks and greenways, along with age-friendly programs and connections and housing opportunities. Recognizing successes is there. We talked about that at retreat, and making sure that we are sharing with the community when we are accomplishing goals and meeting priorities. Safe community is next. We added two buttons there, or bullets there, based on the conversation that we had previously, and those speak to emotional and psychological support and the safety of inclusion. And then the last two are the same, sustainability and environment, and then transportation. So there we go. It is up on the screen now. Thank you Bianca. So want to share that with you because we would like to begin sharing this with the public as soon as this weekend. So we'll begin to have opportunities to share this information through budget sessions, not only online, but also an in-person feedback at events like Stormwater 5K and then certainly all the events on the 22nd. So wanted to share this with you and see if you have any final questions about it.
I just think this is really good and a lot of people are visual. This is very digestible and it really aligns with our strategic plan goals as well. So I think you guys did a really nice job with this. Any other comments for the manager? No? Okay.
All right. Thank you and thank you to Jeannie for a lot of work going into that.
Councilmember Johnson, you have something?
Can I go back? We moved too quick for me, sorry Brandon.
I'm sorry.
I want to go back to this. I just want to say, I appreciate this more than, well, you do know how much I appreciate this. What I really like about this particular sheet is that on the bottom, I know it's on the bottom, but it's highlighted in a different color, is what is our community's perspective. I appreciate that very much. That should stand out. It should be different. It should be a different color because it should be something we're all focusing on and emphasizing because we will not be successful if we are not focusing on that. So I appreciate this very much.
Yes ma'am, thank you.
Always nice to have one extra kudo.
Yes.
Great. Anything else, sir?
Mr. Mayor, I think that's what I have for you.
Okay, that was a lot, all good stuff. Thank you very much. So at this time, we're going to take a 15-minute break and then relocate to the table. Please bring your microphones and your blue cards to that. Please reconvene at 7:53.
This time, there is one work session this evening to discuss proposed updates to the Town Council Meeting Rules of Procedure. We invite Brandon Zudima, Town Manager, and Erin Hudson, interim Town Clerk, to the table to facilitate our discussion.
Thank you, Mayor. So we're going to sort of tag-team this with you. So the background of this is that is, can you put the red line version up, please? Sorry. The background on this, I think, is sort of twofold, one of which is that we just have not gone through this document sort of tooth and nail in a bit of time. So it's always good to occasionally do sort of a full refresh on documents, particularly rules and policies. So we have done that, and we have some recommendations for you, just coming out of some cleanup and some questions for you about, we do this, the policy says that, where would you like to be on that? And then the other piece was that, oh, I think at the last meeting, or maybe two meetings ago, there was a bit of conversation about submission of public comment, and what that timeframe was, and how we can work on being more transparent in that sense. So based on that, we have gone through this document and would like to provide you with some information on some edits we've made, but then also some suggested changes with some explanation behind it, and then several points of discussion of, again, we see this, is this acceptable? Or is this what you'd like to do, or give us your guidance to work on that? So again, this is just a work session tonight to get your initial round of comments. We'll be back on the 25th for an actual briefing, where we'll have made some updates based on your direction, give you a chance to review those, and share any feedback you have at that point. And then assuming that goes well, our intent would be to put this on consent on April 8th for approval, if we get to that point. So, next slide. So the goal tonight, again, we're going to review some staff-recommended changes with you. We've summarized some other changes. There are instances throughout here that we have not highlighted to show you. Sometimes it was council members, all lowercase, sometimes it was the capital C, lower m, sometimes it was both. So things like that, that we've just made consistent throughout the document. Did not highlight all those because it looked a little bit like a bomb went off when we were done. So wanted to focus on some of the more content-driven items and some information there. Again, we want to discuss some of that content that doesn't align with the way we currently practice our work, address any additional comments, questions, or suggested changes you may have, and then ultimately, probably on the 25th, seek consensus on recommended changes, and then bring you back a revised document to take a look at. So again, why review these? These rules of procedure really provide guidance to you, to staff, to the community, as to how things are going to work in a council meeting and in a work session, and in other cases outside of a meeting. We also want to make sure that we're in compliance with North Carolina General Statutes, they guide everything. Also want to make sure that the standard procedure is utilized, i.e. Robert's Rules of Order, for the most part. Also, again, emphasizing transparency to the community, and then really just providing for consistent application of these rules and procedures for all items that come before you. Again, sort of spoke to this, but we've just changed the formatting to be consistent throughout, consistent reference to those terms. We have made some references, changing "should" to "shall." We do have those in here, in case you have any questions. We've replaced any reference to citizens with residents, and any his or her with their, to address that as well. Yes, ma'am? I think we're using "community" for the community perspective, but there's still specific reference in here to residents. There's other references occasionally to businesses or other people. But if we go through this and you want resident replaced with community or community members, we can certainly do that. Sure. Yeah, that was more for, I think, the way we look at things, not necessarily specifically about how it's in here. But again, if we go through this and you think that fits better, we're happy to have that conversation. Thank you. So I'm going to kick us off and get started. So under the Code of Conduct and Commitment to Ethics, and if you are following in the document, this is going to be on page four. And so in the first paragraph, the purpose reads that the conduct of the duly-elected mayor and council of town of Morrisville, there are several cases throughout this document where it calls out the mayor, sort of as you could interpret it as separate from council, and Mayor Collin and I spoke about this. There are several examples where it needs to be the mayor, because there are specific authorities or powers invested in the mayor, occasionally in the mayor pro tem. But in cases where it was sort of separating the mayor from discussion of voting, we have removed those references, because it's really as a council member, as the mayor, as we operate. So that is called out or cleared up in the Purpose section. In Section 1, you'll see some edits there. That's where we change "should" to "shall," and we change "citizen" to "residence." And then our next significant updates are going to be in, any questions on any of that as we go? Yes, ma'am?
So I'm going to tag-team on, um, council members, or residents, and you did change it here. It said, in that one, in Section 1, it says, "council members or citizens," and you changed it to "council members or residents." Why wouldn't that, in that particular place, be "council members or community members"?
It certainly can be. Yep, we can do that. Thank you.
If anybody that comes forward, you know, in anything we do, who's a member of the community, so it may not particularly be a resident.
Yep, thank you. So Sections 3, 4, and 5 are just some replacement of, again, citizen with resident, we'll update that to community member, replacement of "should" with "shall." And then in Section 7, just there's language in there right now that says it'll be reviewed annually each January, but you do that typically at your retreat, so we just changed that language to reference during the council retreat, or no later than the first February council meeting, in the event a retreat is not held, which could happen. So just really clarifying that up. So as we move forward and we move into Rule 1 for regular meetings, that first paragraph talks about that the only reason a meeting would move is if the regular meeting day is a legal holiday. However, we have occasionally moved that, for example, for city vision, when it's a professional commitment that a majority or all of council would attend. So we've changed that language to reflect it can also be allowed, moved to allow council members and staff to attend a conference. We've also clarified, the language in the meeting was that the meeting shall be held on the previous Monday, but we also haven't always done that. We've done that, I think, once this year. So we're going to change that language to say Monday, or on Wednesday, or Thursday of the same week, at the discretion of council, just to not box ourselves into a Monday, because we've occasionally done that differently. And then again, the second paragraph talks about meetings shall be held at the Town Council chambers. But again, we've occasionally moved, whether that's construction here or in availability here. So we've added a note, unless council chambers are unavailable, in which case Town Council shall work with staff to identify an alternative location. With any such change in location duly advertised, we've also made the statement, efforts will be made to have council meetings in council chambers whenever possible. Yes, sir?
Is it possible that we may, at some time in the future, consider having remote meetings? I know it's been a challenge, but I'd like this to be able to give us the opportunity that we don't have to revisit it, in order to do that sometime in the future, to just leave that open.
So we have that authority for fully remote meetings under state of emergency?
Not remote, just off-site.
Off-site. Yes. I think you could, we could make it where it's not, it could be your discretion, it doesn't have to be the council chambers are unavailable.
I think that'd be nice for the future, in case we ever want to go to where people are, some other location. That is a big burden for staff, but it may come to the point that it might be something that we want to invest our time in.
No, sure, and we're also working on, sorry, councilmember body. We're working on looking at some sort of more portable options for, you know, how do we make sure we've got good audio? How do we make sure we can do video remotely if we need to? So that would certainly line up with that, that would ease some of that burden.
I am very, very respectfully wondering if we need to hit every single page of this 51-slide presentation? I mean, we've all reviewed the presentation, I feel like we all have our sections where we may want to make comments or go a little deeper. And I'm just kind of feeling like, you know, if we stop on every slide, I just don't think that it may be necessary to read every slide out loud. Perhaps we could, you know, like flash the slide and ask if there are any comments?
Yes, absolutely.
Just to move things along, would that be okay?
Great point, we're moving to that. I think we had a little bit more at the front end, but yes.
Appreciate that, thank you.
We're actually going to start to fly through some of these, because they're very straightforward. Just wanted to make that highlight for you and anyone in the public that might be interested about what we've changed, so.
Thank you.
I think we're going to do that right now, as a matter of fact. So Rule 2, again, again, option 2, where we recommend removing the reference to the mayor, because it's really a reference to a council member. And then a majority vote is required to call a special meeting, and then we just added reference to North Carolina General Statutes in Rule 2. Again, more reference to the mayor that's removed on that screen, or slide, excuse me. North Carolina General Statutes, the mayor and general statutes. So again, subsection D, a mayor reference, and D2 is North Carolina General Statutes. So Rule 4, the agenda, just some minor tweaks there. It's called a proposed agenda, we're suggesting it a draft agenda, that's the terminology we more consistently use. So on the consent agenda, the, we realize that the North Carolina General Statute each actually says that we should list the individual items on consent in our minutes. We have previously just said the minutes were voted on, so we're just going to update that we record in the meeting minutes what each consent item was, just to make sure we're in compliance. Section D1, it talked about work sessions being the last item, just clarified it can be the last item typically, except closed sessions. And then, right now, the language says that you can only allow for one work session per meeting, but we have sometimes done two, and I think you've been comfortable with that. We don't tend to make them both long, but again, just want the rules to reflect our practice. Yes, sir?
I think there's one exception where we actually had a work session earlier in the day because of some need of stakeholders who are attending. I'm not sure if we care to include the ability to do that.
I think we have the ability to do that, I don't think this restricts us from that.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you. All right, so still in Rule 4, this is sort of a discussion item with you. So subsection E, the Town Council Roundtable, by definition now, it requires a 2/3 majority of council members to move a roundtable item forward, and that would be five members. We have occasionally done that with four, because I think we had assumed it was a majority versus a supermajority. So again, we have rarely done that, but just want to make sure you want to keep that at five, and we start practicing that, or if you want to reduce that back to four. Councilmember Fender?
So is this 2/3 majority something that's changed, or being stipulated by the statutes?
That's what's in the current rule. It is not, it is not a part of a statute requirement, it's your rule in terms of the roundtable, because the roundtable's completely yours, there's nothing in the statute about that. So this is just where our practice doesn't align with the rule. And just want a little guidance on, do you want to align with the rule, and make sure five council members support a roundtable item? Or do you want to curve that back to a majority?
I mean, my preference is we allow for four affirmative votes.
Others?
I'm sorry, we haven't been adhering to our own rules. That's kind of sad when I read this.
Again, another reason to go through these occasionally and make sure we're doing what we're supposed to be doing.
I actually forgot that that's how we had set it up, quite frankly, but... Four's fine. We do everything we do in a majority, so.
Okay, looks like we've got four for that. Thank you.
You got four votes.
I'm pretty sure I had the head nods to go with that, so I think we're good there, so thank you for that. Rule 5, I'm going to turn it over to Erin to start talking about public input and some changes we're suggesting there.
All right, thank you, Town Manager, and thank you, Council, for giving us a little bit of time with you all this evening. So one of the things that we've talked about a little bit over the last few weeks, few months, probably even few years for some of you, is public address can be a little bit confusing, because we've caught up public address, public input, public comment, there's public hearing, there's lots of different ways to refer to it. So some of the discussion that we've had with amongst staff, following some feedback from council, is to find a better way or a broader term to refer to public input. So staff is suggesting that we now refer to it within our agenda as "Morrisville Speaks: Public Comment." And then we've got some additional recommendations in the next few slides, as to how we'll sort of further break that down and clarify. But just want to make sure that in transparency, that makes sense to you all, it makes sense to us, but just want to make sure that flows as we move forward. Yes, Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson?
So I like the fact that we have "Morrisville Speaks," but it's really important, because people come from all over the country and internationally. Public comment has a certain expectation, so we need to make sure we have public comment in that agenda item, as well as "Morrisville Speaks," not just "Morrisville Speaks." I know you said slash, but I want to reaffirm that, because it's important that people know how to engage in public comment, is that standard way that we reference that. At least, in my opinion, it's standard. Obviously, we have variations that you just described, so.
Thank you, and that is the, sort of the recommendation from staff, is that the agenda item would no longer be referred to as public address, it would be referred to as "Morrisville Speaks: Public Comment." Yes, Mayor Collin?
This is just way outside the box, but it's "Morrisville Listens: Public Comment," because we're listening. So that's just another way to look at it. I'm not saying that that's what we're going to do, but that just sort of struck me. Because the public comment is, the public commenting, "Morrisville is listening," something like that. But I like the way it is, I just wanted to say that.
So to address Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's comment, why not just call it "public comment"? I mean, I like the idea of changing it from "public address" to "public comment," but why does it need to say "Morrison Speaks: Public Comment"?
So I think we're going to get into that in the next few slides, and hopefully clarify a little bit of why we're recommending that as sort of the umbrella term.
And that was a term that came from council as a suggestion, to consider that, to highlight that on the agenda, so it's not just seen as public comment, but it mentions "Morrisville Speaks," so that's why that's in there. But again, that's also why we're here.
So how are you going to address, like, the lady that always comes from Cary to talk about tennis? As an example?
I mean, I think she's still speaking on Morrisville issues.
Okay.
I think one of the comments that I have made was, because Cary speaks, is that it came from there, and we attended the school for that. And I like, I thought it was, it is like, I understand what Wiki is talking about, but they are coming to the podium in Morrisville, and they're speaking. That's part of it, you know, like, you can come all over the board, doesn't matter. But when you're speaking, you're speaking from the podium. And also, good thing, I don't know, Brandon, if you can do with your logistics, they have a screen behind it, like a monitor, whenever they speak, that I remember those in the background, but I like if you go and look at Cary's. Like, when they speak, like, where you have this, kind of, Marshall 1952, where they come and speak there.
Yeah.
There's usually a black screen monitor at the back, and it's, it has a, like, you know, background, "Morrison Speaks." So I'm just giving, yes.
Okay.
But it, I think, speak has volumes, because that you're telling them to come and speak.
Okay. Okay. All right.
So again, just offering a little further clarity, we've referred to it in the past in multiple different ways, even within the policy in multiple different ways, public address, public comment, there's public hearing, so that, that public input is sort of the, the general theme that, that we're really seeking, aiming for that clarity, so this is really where, where we're headed, so Morrisville Speaks Public Comment is going to be, like we said, the recommended umbrella, you'll have your public comment items, which is where anyone has the opportunity to speak on any topic of their choosing, not listed for a public hearing at that time, public hearing input is a statutorily required public hearing, where people can come and share their thoughts on that public hearing item. We also have had opportunities and situations in the past where there has been a public hearing noticed, not statutorily required. Brandon and I talked, and I think the last time that happened was related to our comprehensive transportation plan, because it was a, a plan, there was required public hearing, but as staff and as council, we desire to have additional feedback, so we did have voluntary public hearings during that time, so there's not a legal requirement, and we would label that as a voluntary public hearing input opportunity. So just an outline of some, some different options there that we've proposed within the policy, just wanted to ensure that council is comfortable with that approach and supportive of that as well. Yes, Councilmember Rabbey?
So I think that the reason that it's confusing on the website is because it's not, like, I think this is fine for the policy, but I think that we should take the additional step of spelling everything out very clearly on the website, because that's the problem, the problem isn't the policy. So would there then be additional website changes to back up this?
100%.
Okay, then I'm fine with this.
Yes, thank you, absolutely. We wanted to get consensus, and then the next step would be to work with comms to potentially update, well, to update the website.
Councilmember Fender, then Councilmember Johnson?
Yeah, so if I was a member of the public, for it to be called voluntary public hearing input would be, would confuse me, as opposed to involuntary, I mean, that would be my, my first question, you would hope all public hearing inputs would be voluntary, if you're trying to differentiate it between, like, when it's a, what is the word you use?
So they're statutorily required and non-statutorily required?
I mean, could you call this public feedback, instead of voluntary public hearing input?
So we were trying to steer away from public feedback, public comment, public address, public input, because I think that's where we've, we've gotten sort of into that gray area, where we've been the last several years, and wanted to ensure that individuals knew when we were required by law to host a public hearing, and then when we took it upon ourselves to, to host a public hearing, to ensure that we gained additional insight and, and feedback.
Yeah, I mean, I'm glad you guys are providing this better clarification in the terms, because it is confusing for the public, but calling it voluntary public hearing, to me, is more confusing.
That's probably the fourth version of the, we went through a lot of different iterations of that, trying to sort that out, we agree with you, I think something else we could do is we could go perhaps with required public hearing input and non-required public hearing input, it gets away from the voluntary piece, or the other option, quite honestly, is we just call it public hearing input for the purposes of the policy, and particularly for the public, they're, they're come to speak at a public hearing on a topic, as opposed to public comment on a non-agenda topic, and then we would know that it's either statutory or non-statutory required, we could clarify that language in the definitions, but for the public, it could just be public comment versus public hearing input.
Yeah, I like that.
Does that sound better? Okay, let's do that.
That was going to be my exact same issue, and I, I, did you sense all three of us? And I agree, you're right, this is, this is our problem, not the public's problem to solve.
Yep.
So, yeah, I think to simplify it, they don't need to know whether it's a legal requirement or not, that's for us to know.
Yes, thank you, but like I said, we, we're almost there.
Mayor Colley?
I'm very close to that, it seems like there's just two, I think I was close to that, there's two things, there's public comment, and then there's public hearing in any form.
Yep.
But the voluntary public hearing seems to me like that's just public comment, so you don't.
No, it would be a specific topic, it would be a specific topic soliciting feedback on that, public comment is any topic of anyone's choosing.
So it'll be a different agenda item?
Yes.
So we're looking to hear from you on this specific item, on this agenda item, okay, so that makes sense.
But just one public hearing category is probably, makes the most sense.
Yes.
And it's, again, data public is not particularly concerned, I think, to Councilmember Johnson's point.
That's fair.
Whether it's required or not, we would know that, and it would just trigger certain, you know, again, although really, in the few occasions when we've done that option, we've still advertised it like a public hearing, it just hasn't been statutorily required, so I think just minimizing categories probably makes a lot of sense if you're all good with that.
Okay, so if we have a number of public hearings, some required, some voluntary, they're all under the same agenda item, just different bullets?
Yes.
That sounds reasonable.
Yep, great, thank you.
Thank you for that feedback, so here, again, we just added some clarifying language within the policy that we discussed on the previous slide, just making sure that we've got enhanced transparency to ensure that everyone knows there's ample opportunity for them to provide their feedback, and that we're clarifying the, the ways that we categorize and, and note those. Again, we are recommending changing it simply from public hearing to public hearing input, but I think we've, we've now heard maybe we don't even need to go that far, because if we just stick with public hearing, again, internally, we can clarify that on our own, so the, the second half of that, really no need to further clarify voluntary versus involuntary, we are noting that really it would be the duly advertised would probably still be added for clarification, just so that individuals know public hearings are duly Continuing on with public input, everyone's favorite topic, so offering some clarification here related to online public input, we have removed the reference to eComment, that was actually a paid service that we had previously that we no longer have, so suggesting that we now refer to that as online public input, clarifying that that is used to really submit any form of the, the type of input or feedback that we've just discussed here tonight. Realigned a couple of areas of the policy further in, really to better fit with the flow within Rule 5, also broadened the submittal period, so that individuals can share their comments or their feedback following the immediate end of one council meeting, up to three hours prior to the start of the next council meeting, really just again, allowing for more opportunity for folks to, to share that information, more transparency, more of an opportunity to engage with town council, some of that was feedback from council, some of that was discussion from staff, so we think we sort of accurately hit a couple of, of checkmarks there. Yes, Mayor Colley?
So if someone does it, like, at 5:00 PM before a meeting, it'll just carry it to the next meeting?
No, it wouldn't carry it to the next meeting, but it would be similar to our process now, where it would just be summarized with their name, address, very, very high level, this individual submitted a comment on X, and then you would receive the full complement of their comment in email form, we would not read those comments during the meeting.
Okay, but if they want it read, they would just have to resubmit it the following day or something?
Correct.
Okay, so if we just make that clear as well.
Okay.
Because they're all going to be summarized in our minutes, as they already are, but if they want it read into the record, they just would need to resubmit it if it's outside of our, those three hours essentially, or during the meeting time.
Okay. Yes, Councilmember Johnson?
So, you know, I, I like the idea of the public having the opportunity to submit their comments and feedback to us whenever, because that's almost what this is, I, but I see that different than, than this where it's going to be summarized and read at a council meeting, so that's why I'm struggling with the, from the last meeting to three hours before the next meeting, all of that is going to be categorized and then shared, I, I see this as two different things, quite frankly, I don't.
We get a lot of emails that's not necessarily for me.
Right.
It's just a person's opinion that they're sending to you.
And we get lots, I get emails, we, we, I got a bunch of them today, too, so.
If I could, I think this is going to be what gets submitted to public comment@morrisvillenc.gov, which is different than what's coming to Town Council@morrisvillenc.gov, if that helps.
Understand that, I understand that, I understand that, I guess what I'm saying is, I would like to see a mechanism for the public to input their feedback whenever they want to, and then we get that information through some other mechanism, and then, and then for public comment at a council meeting, that it not be open, because we're talking about a two-week period here where it's open, I, I kind of, I'm, I'm concerned that we're going to get mix of everything, and I'm not, that, I'm, I'm not articulating this well, I know I'm not, but I, I see this as two different mechanisms to get input from the public, and I think this one should be a little shorter window, but there should be an opportunity for folks, like, we don't have any other mechanism, do we, where you can say, except for emailing the council as a whole?
And, and thank you, Councilmember Johnson, if I may, so one of the concerns we had heard from council was that our, our online input window was potentially hindering folks from.
I would agree with that.
From sharing.
I would agree with that.
And so then we thought, okay, we don't want to be a hindrance to that transparency and that opportunity to input, but understand, to your point, maybe that whole two-week period is too long and it needs to be a little more narrow.
So, yes, it, now, this is just me, what I would say is, once the agenda comes out, then this period starts, and from the, from the, the time the agenda's made public, then the public has the opportunity to weigh in until three hours before the meeting, that kind of makes sense to me.
I like that idea.
So that, understand that, I think that with, with the way we're doing the draft agenda now, it's a two-day difference, because this would open up on a Wednesday, but then that Friday, unless for those, when we have that extra week, that Friday, a draft agenda's going out, but based on our conversation retreat, and you're pressed to be more transparent and let people have more than just a weekend.
Yep.
To reach out to you.
And I don't have a problem with that, yep, yep, two weeks is not making sense to me, quite frankly, but whatever you all want to.
So we, do you want, I'm sorry, do you want to line up with the draft agenda or not, because now we've been lining, you could line up with the full agenda, but that's just that, four days, we could line it up with the draft agenda the Friday before, if you're okay with that.
But that would still be the two weeks.
It would be close to two weeks, it'd be 10 days, 11 days.
The question is, the public doesn't get the draft agenda, right?
It's posted to the website.
The draft?
Yes.
But it has no detail.
We started doing it after the retreat.
It has no detail, it's an outline.
Yeah, but there is nothing.
It gives you the topics.
Right.
I don't know what.
I don't know, I don't know, I'm just, I don't know how we land.
Mayor Colley, and then Councilmember Rabbey?
I prefer to, you know, if the meeting ends, people don't care when the agenda comes out, if they have something they want to share with us and they want it to be during the meeting, I think they should be able to do it immediately, so the way you have it set up, the three hours before the meeting and the meeting time itself, I think that's as limiting as it needs to be, so I, I'd say send it anytime, pretty much, and then there's only certain times that it gets read into the meeting.
I think we can clarify that, let me, let's, there's two others.
Councilmember Rabbey, and then Councilmember Ralph?
Yeah, I'm not sure exactly what problem we're trying to solve here, so, because if the concern is that we're going to get too much public comment, is that, or that the public comments would not be relevant to the agenda, which they don't have to be, in order to be public comment, so is, is your concern that the two weeks that will be flooded with public comment and that it'll take a lot of time in the meetings?
I think partly, yes, and then the other part is, I think people will send comments that way when that, that's not the mechanism that really is appropriate for them to send information, that they may want, they may not want it read at a council meeting, they, they don't want their, you know, they would rather just send an email to council, it's all valuable information, it all, we, we take it all in, but I don't.
Okay, so then, what about this, what if on the, in the public comment, I haven't been to the website in a while, to be honest, but if there's a button that says public comment, then can we, could we clarify that these items will be read out the council meeting, that in two weeks or in whenever, you know, on date or the second and fourth Tuesday, if you'd like to reach council earlier or don't want your comments read at a public meeting and provide the town council, does that help?
Yeah, that does help, yeah.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm fine with, I'm fine with it being, you know, three hours before the meeting, I mean, I think as long, you know, I, I think to the extent we can provide the public a chance to give comments as close to the meeting as possible, because, I mean, there may be something on the agenda that triggers a thought, they want to come in, and I think if you cap it too soon, you know, so, I don't know what, like, I speak of the way county commissioners, like, once a month and sign off, or is it nine in the morning, but I don't know when they close it, but if you don't get there early, then you're just, you're like the 50th, 40th speaker, so.
So right now, our online availability for individuals to submit comment, email comment, if they're not able to speak at your, your meeting, is 9:00 AM to 3:00 PM, the day of a meeting, and, and we've heard some feedback that that is just not a big enough window, because some people, you know, just between work, school, what have you.
Yeah.
They, they just miss that opportunity, so if they want to send their comment at 7:00 AM, then it doesn't get read in full during the meeting, so just trying to broaden that window.
Yeah.
But again, don't necessarily want to make it so broad that it, to Councilmember Johnson's point, that it loses the, the intent or the spirit of public comment.
Right, when do we, so we read them into the meeting when they haven't gotten it in time, right?
We, we read their full comment if they submit within that window, if they submit outside of that window, we only read the name and a, a very high-level.
High-level, okay.
Description. Yes, sir.
I think we've heard Councilmember Brad Johnson?
So, we've kind of circled and recircled, so I just want to see if I'm hearing what I think I'm hearing, so today, Tuesday, you opened public comments via public comment at townofmorrisvillenc.gov at 9:00 AM, and you closed it at 3:00 PM, so if I read the agenda, looked at the presentations, had some comments, I could submit it, and we would hear the full content of that perspective from the emailer today, right? A lot of folks don't even know that, you know, what's on the agenda until Friday, so sometimes they might not be ready to give their comments, you know, right away, I'm thinking Monday to Tuesday might be better, give some people overnight, but I guess the sticky part for me is if I submit something to public comment at Town of Morrisville, I expect that to be recorded as a public comment, whether I submit it a week in advance of the meeting, because I have time to submit it, or if I submit it during that special window, would my comment submitted through that email? Would my comment submitted through that email address be published with the minutes if I submitted it outside of 9:00 a.m. to 3:00 p.m.?
The full context of the comment, no. It would, the, the policy as it is currently, anything submitted, and, excuse me, any, any comments received outside of that, that published window, we would only record the name and the summary of the comment. And council would receive the full content of that comment.
But it's, but the minutes really are the memorial of any public information. It's what's discoverable upon request. I, it's a big deal. I mean, we're, we're censoring, we're summarizing somebody, who's, who's to say the summary is correct? You know, there's, what's the check and balance?
So, we do that with all public comment. No, no public, so, you know, Suresh was here, Mr. Narayan was here this evening. His full comments are not going to appear in the minutes of this meeting. It'll be a summary of what he said. Because again, the minutes are not, the minutes are a rendition of what it is. The, the recording is technically the official sort of minutes of the meeting or the official recording, where if you wanted to hear everything he said, then you would watch the video. We don't currently transcribe three minutes, up to three minutes. We summarize any public comment in the minutes, and then if you want to hear the full public comment, they can be viewed through the recording.
So how long are the recordings available? In perpetuity?
Indefinitely. Yeah, they don't go away.
In perpetuity?
They don't go away.
I, I mean, I'm not sure how I feel. I mean, verbatim is a burden on minutes and stuff like that, but it's, it's interesting that we don't read it on the video, and then basically, the email information is lost. So if somebody submitted through email in public comment outside of the time zone, their information is lost. But if they submit it during the window, you would have it on video, what they said, so we would be able to know what they said. See? Am I making sense? I don't know.
Right, right.
I, I want, if they take the time to submit a public comment, maybe, starting Monday, I would want to know what they said, and I would want it documented, because it's important that they took the effort, and I want to reference it later, maybe. Thank you.
Do we give it as an email?
Yes.
Yes.
It, it does become a public record, because it's sent to all of us working in local government.
Very, very valid point.
I struggle with the search just to find minutes. If it's not linked, people are not going to connect that so-and-so submitted an email on this date. If it's not linked, they won't know to ask to look. So, thanks.
Valid point. Thank you. Mayor Protim.
There, there are issues, like, you know, I think we went over last time with Martha. Only the essence is important, because many a times, the emails will start bouncing. We don't even know the authenticity of the person. We don't even know anything, but it is coming to the portal, then you're seeing it to be attached to it. It's kind of, you know, depends on what, and you don't want those kind of things to be attached to a, a public record, just because they're using that portal, like, just saying that. Yeah.
Did I get, did you have another question or comment?
So, I honestly, I don't, is it, is it a big lift for staff to just put the emails, append the emails to the PDF of the minutes? Because I don't, because the thing is, people that, people that are coming to the meeting and making comments have said, "I've submitted my comments in email also," like they, you know, people do often send their minutes, send their comments in email. And if they want their comments fully recorded, that's probably what they would do. And so, I think that we should, I'm with Vicki, I don't, and, and because often, I think that the summary, the summary is like a one-liner of what the person said, and describes, like, a really well-written email with lots of detail, and, you know, and it's just, and that is just lost. And so, I think that either we should link to each email, public comment, whatever, or I think it's, but I mean, it's so simple to just attach it to a PDF, I don't, I don't see why we don't do that. Like, because it's not like there are so many public comments that this is on us. I mean, we're lucky if we have two or three public comments, except, of course, you know, the odd times when we have thefts. But I do, I think that we should, I think that it's important for, for us, not only for us to know what people are saying, but for people to know what each other is saying, you know? And also, can people submit more than one public comment? Because I know in here, they have three minutes. But if they, if they have one way in on more than one topic, what are we doing with that?
So I would suggest that, you know, what would have, and this is the same for any email, so, you know, if, if somebody submits an email that it takes more than three minutes to read, it wouldn't be read into the record. So again, that's, that's why we're summarizing them a per time. So I think if someone, you know, submitted a, a public comment that addressed more than one thing, we would summarize, you know, that they submitted two topics.
Yeah, which I'm fine with summarizing them in the meeting, but what I'm saying is that I don't think that summarizing them in the meeting provides full transparency of what that public comment actually was. And if it's not too big a lift, I would like to see them appended to the minutes.
We'll look at that.
Thank you. Okay, sorry.
So, I'm, I'm a little concerned about being fair. So we don't, we summarize the public, the public that is here, present at a meeting, we summarize them in our minutes now, because they are full presentation, or their full three minutes will, will be archived on the video. So, and I'm fine with that. I'm, I think that's good, to summarize it in the minutes. I'm also good with summarizing any other comments that come in through an email, however we're doing this. I'm fine with summarizing that, because then it's fair in the minutes. Everybody's comments are summarized. And just like the person who's present at a council meeting, the public has to go watch the video to hear their full comments. And anyone that wants to read somebody else's full comments would have to go somewhere else and, and maybe, maybe do a public records request, I don't know. I'm trying to figure that part out. So, I don't, I don't want to see some people treated differently in minutes than other people, and I don't want to see everybody verbatim put in the minutes. I think that's too onerous on, on the folks that come forward. So, I'm trying to figure out a fair way to do this. And, and, and on top of all of that, I would say, and we know this, we all get feedback and input a million different ways outside of a, of a, of a public meeting and even outside of our email system. We talk to people all the time. I talk to folks all the time, and so that, their feedback's never captured anywhere, except, you know, at, to each one of us. And that matters and is important. So anyhow, that, just my two cents on that. I don't, I don't want to see, I don't want to see us, I think that's unfair, to put the full context of emails into the minutes when we're not doing that for others.
Mayor Colley?
There's a lot. One thing about being ones that are emailed in, you might want to make note that if it is going to be read during the meeting, it's up to three minutes, just like the regular speakers do, I don't know, we're actually saying that, so we can cut ourselves off when we're reading it. Lots of good things about being fair. One way to maybe be fair would be to summarize the emails within the window, without the window, but also just appending them to the end, just if people want to see them. So, I'm interested in staff checking other municipalities about how they handle that, whether or not this is like a pan of worms, or if you're getting too much memories. So, I'm not going to worry about that, or, you know, giving directions tonight. Another thing for fairness, if people speak in the meeting and you feel like they're not getting fully into the record, it would be a little onerous to actually do a timestamp and include that in the minutes, and include the name to the recording. So if someone's looking at the minutes, they can actually know where in the recording they want to hear the entire person's name, or appending an actual email to the end of the minutes. So that way, everyone has the opportunity to hear word for word what's being on there. But that's a lot, and that's a lot of work. And I'm not sure we're looking for more work. I think they're just trying to make it easier for the public to feel and know that they're getting heard.
Yeah, I think if they're looking for public input, I mean, it's either going to be during the public comment session, or if there was a public hearing. So I don't think it's too much hunting, that they can go to the recording and, and click on that agenda item, and that would take them to where that's going to be. So I, I think we address that, I think we take care of that. You know, the appending, I think there's just some difference of opinion as to, you know, what, what the level of fairness is. But we'll, we'll do some outreach, and then we'll perhaps bring you back some options next time, that you can talk us through. Okay?
That's conflicting with Ann's.
Okay.
Here we go.
All right. Okay, so, we again have continued to talk a little bit about, just following some of that additional effort for transparency, an enhanced opportunity for you all to receive the online public comment, but again, have just heard from you all, you want to hear a little bit more about some options on best ways to receive that, best window of opportunity for individuals to share that. So I'm going to jump over this slide, and I'm just going to touch briefly on this one, because this is really where previous direction was to abbreviate what had been received outside of your desired window, share in full context what had been shared within that window. So we're going to do a little bit more work on that. Some language was added to subsection B of Rule 5, really just to clarify some of the content within those subsections related to time allotment, sign up, groups of speakers, protocol, courtesy. Again, we'll go back and just review a little bit further and ensure that we're being consistent with what you have shared with us as to, as far as what you all would like to see being available for the public here as well. Then I'm going to move forward a little bit to the opportunity for individuals to sign up to speak in person. So previously, that sign-up period carried through to the very beginning of when public address or public comment would start. We have recommended that that actually end at the start of a meeting. Couple of reasons for that is, it provides that information to the clerk in a more timely manner, ensures that the clerk, if they are clerking by themselves, or even if they have another support staff here, doesn't have to get up, leave the meeting, interrupt that flow, just allows them to have that, that opportunity right out of the gate. Mayor Colley also has a practice now of asking if anyone wants to speak that did not sign up. So really, has some redundancy built in there to ensure that no one misses that opportunity to sign up. There was also a prior reference, if I could just cover this last bullet here. Prior reference was also that public comment would start at 6:30. That has not been council's practice for a very long time, so we've just removed that outdated language. Excuse me, Councilmember Scroggins Johnson, and then Mayor Protim.
So, sometimes our meetings do run a little long, sometimes they're short, and you don't really know when public address is going to be held, since we're not sticking to our 6:30. I, I, I know that if there's a long agenda, sometimes people don't show up, they watch online, and then they show up just before public address, and they're not there at the start of the 6:00 p.m. start time. So if we cut it off at 6:00 p.m., then I guess we have to make sure that the mayor does, you know, anybody else kind of thing. So, I don't really understand then if we're cutting it off at 6:00 p.m. and, and TJ's offering it out to anybody if there's any efficiency gained, because you're, you're still having surprise guests, if you will.
I, I think we'd be open to discussion of the council, if, if there's...
I mean, what exactly are we processing from 6:00 p.m. to 6:30? I mean, if somebody comes in at 6:15, they can't do the sign-up sheet, because it's taken away. Is, is there any active work being done between 6:00 p.m. and when public address starts? That's my question. It's like, I don't know why, I mean, if there's something that is burdensome that we need to do before public address starts, otherwise, why are we not taking the sheet when it's, you know, five minutes before public address starts? I, I just don't understand why we would cut it off at 6:00 p.m. when some people...
I think it's just for email.
I think it's, no, this is for people in person. I think there's, there's two reasons, I think. One is that we are going to get back to one clerk being here for meetings. And so when we do that, that would require the clerk to leave the room during the active meeting and, and grab that. The other piece of that, it's also advantageous for the clerk to have that in here, or a little before 6:00, because there are sometimes names they want to clarify pronunciations on, to be respectful of people that wish to speak, particularly if we have some of our larger groups. Some people that sign up either don't have great handwriting, or the name may be difficult to pronounce. So we do our best to make sure that we respect people and, and pronounce their names, and so the clerk will do some of that work right prior to the beginning of the meeting as well.
And I understand names are difficult, you know, Scroggins is sometimes difficult for some people to say correctly, and I have to say it. But I just don't understand why we're cutting it off at 6:00, because a lot of people do arrive after 6:00 p.m. So, thanks.
Mayor Protim.
So, just on this topic, putting the community perspective, why do we have to wait for a half an hour, 45 minutes, an hour before talking about public input, or even public comments? Like, my thing is, when the person is coming here, they are rested, they want to go back to their homes with the kids and soccer practice and all kinds of things. Why can't we just quickly get that done, and one of the, like, after, very early on? Because that will be over, and people can get along with their life, what they have to do. Otherwise, many a times, they have to wait till like 45 minutes, one hour, two hours sometimes.
Are you suggesting, I'm sorry?
No, I'm, so, two things I'm suggesting. One is, very early on, have Morrisville speak. And, and the second is, if there is like a rezoning and they're coming for that, what is it, public comments? Yeah, public hearing. So, public hearing, then have it in such a way that it is ahead of the agenda, where they don't have to wait for an hour and a half, around 8:30 when they're coming, they don't know the agenda, they don't read the agenda, they just come here and sit for two hours and get frustrated and walk away. So we're not really taking that input either.
So I think we could certainly move public comment earlier in the agenda. I mean, that could immediately, that could come before the consent agenda, in case anything's pulled, it could come right after, you know, the, the prayer and the invocation. Sorry, not prayer, invocation. And pledge, I mean, we could go right to that. I think the public hearing's a little more challenging, because we do try to get some other items out of the way, presentations.
Yeah, I'm not saying right away, so like, after the presentation, you know, like...
I think the public hearings are typically going to fall where they fall in terms of, you know, an action item, because we don't want to start doing some action items sooner just be, I don't think we'd, I mean, you're, certainly your decision, but I don't know if we want to do certain action items sooner because it has a public hearing versus other action items that would have to wait. I think moving up public comment is very easy towards the front of the meeting.
And, and if I may also add, so typically, the way your agenda is structured is to allow you to call your meeting to order, your invocation, then you adopt your agenda, then you do sort of your consent, if you have consent items, then you do ceremonials, which is proclamations, presentations, things of that sort, because in a similar fashion, you have individuals here who may... Because in a similar fashion, you have individuals here who may only be here to receive or to witness or something of that sort. Then you move into administrative reports, which typically are not pulled unless there are questions. So those move quickly. So that's something that could move up or down in your agenda. Then you have public address, which will now be morsel speaks, public comment. So that's very early in the agenda and then that would be immediately followed by public hearing because those are your first two opportunities for the public to come in and share comment with you immediately following anything that you have specifically maybe invited someone for.
I hear you, but I don't see why administrative report has to be going higher up. It can always go lower.
Absolutely, that's what I'm saying. There's some, I think, some opportunity to flex a few things there.
Anything that, you know, if a person wants to speak, let them speak and go, that's all I would say.
Sure. Councilmember Robideau.
So I just want to speak up for the full-time working person here, which is I frequently struggle to get here at 6 o'clock. And the more that you move the meeting, move the public comment up in the agenda, in my opinion, it just, I think you're, it's going to be difficult for, there are people for whom it is very difficult to be at town hall at 6 o'clock at night. And I think it's difficult for people to be here at 6:30, you know. So I think that if we give people some kind of reasonable expectation of when this will occur, public comment usually occurs around 7 o'clock. Something like, I mean, because I think we have like some kind of trend line here about what time we usually get to public comment, but I'm not in favor of moving it all the way up because, because to be honest, sometimes I'll miss it. Like, you know, I think I, I mean, it's February and I think I've been, or it's March and I think I've been late to three meetings already. It's hard to get here, it's hard to get here at 6:00, it's hard to get here at 6:30. So, you know, I'm just, I'm just saying, I think that, you know, we, I mean, we can move it up for some people because they don't want to sit here longer and we're going to miss comments from people that really want to be here but are going to miss it. So I think, I think it's better to give people an idea of what time it would probably be happening and then, you know, and then just go with that. I mean, we have a red line agenda that tells us basically what time this is going to happen.
Councilmember...
Yeah, they don't see the red line.
But I hear you. And so, and I, yeah, we're not going to make everybody happy, but Mayor Protam is right. There have been times when we have not gotten to public comments or public address or whatever we're calling it until way late. And we've had clerk call names and nobody's here. So I would like to try to figure out a way to avoid that. And that has, that has happened when we've had presentations that were really long, that went before public comments. So if we could be kind of, and I don't know how to handle it because a presentation is a presentation, but if we could be mindful of that when we're setting the agenda to not, not make public address, public comments, morsel speaks after some big items. And I can't, right now, I can't think of, I mean, we've had department presentations, those have added to the timing, and there were other big presentations that I'm, and I don't, I'm not blaming department presentations because those were pretty good. But anyhow, if we could kind of be mindful of that, I think, and we, so this is an age old problem because we've had this like the number three on the agenda, we've had it at the end of the agenda, we've had it in the middle of the agenda, and I think we'll just keep tweaking it till we get, I don't know if we're ever going to get it right, but that's why we have all these other mechanisms, quite frankly. This is why we have the email, we have the ability for folks to email their comment because they are at work and can't get here. So I think we kind of remember that too, so.
Councilmember Ralston and Mayor Colley.
Well, I mean, I think the key is efficiency. I know that we moved the meeting, our meetings used to be at 6:30, moved them at 6:00. In the last seven years, we've been getting out later than we did in the first two years on the council. So that's, that's a conversation another time. I'm probably to blame for that, but, but, yeah, I'll go out there and say that.
Well, you, you set it up.
But, but, what I will say is that what the Wake County Commissioners, what I like, what they did was, it used to be that they would do their public comments at like 5:30, right? Or like they would at a certain time. But when Shanika Thomas became the chair, what she did was, I don't know if they're going back to the way it was, they moved it after they got through the consent agenda, they would go right into public comment. So one time I got there at 5:30 and I missed it because I didn't realize they changed that policy. I realize it's hard to get somewhere with the working, the working perspective, but it does force, it does, the people that are vested will take the time to get there early and then they can knock out as many comments as they can. The only challenge is if there's a big issue, like I, you know, like on the RDU quarry or whatever, then there was like 100 speakers and it just goes on, you know. But if you wait too late, like with these presentations, then it really makes it hard. The Mayor Protam brought up a good point. People want to give the public comment and then they're waiting until 8 o'clock and they've got to go home and they got to make dinner, they got to do homework, they got to go pick up their kids from practice. So, you know, today we talked about the resident perspective, the manager perspective, but I think that's a good point. We have to look at it from the resident perspective. Who's going to want to stay here till 8:30 to give a comment? 8 o'clock. So that's, so this is one of them.
Mayor Colley?
So I'll start with that end part, is it might be possible to have an agenda item for just short presentations like proclamations, then have public address and then have the longer presentations after it. So that's a way to sort of keep on moving it up because I'm in favor of, I think we've got it as close to the beginning as we can except when we have a department presentation or something like that. We used to have people sign up for public comments on a computer outside and then the clerk could see it. It's been a number of years, but I'm sure that we could revisit that technology or do something again. And that means you have the correct spelling of their name, you have their full address, you have their email address, you have everything that you want, and then they can just sign up starting at 9:00 AM, whatever day, right up until the comments are happening and no one has to leave. So that's just something that might solve that problem a little bit.
I think we've all given you a lot of good ideas. Can we wrap it up now and move on? Because there's still 20 some more slides or almost 20.
Sure, can. So thank you. Again, just a reminder, we've added some clarifying language to your policy to share with the public that if for any reason they're not able to be here at the time of the meeting, they can always share via the online portal. We've also added some clarifying language to Rule 5 for anyone who would like to share audio visual presentation materials. We don't get a lot of these requests, but anytime we have had them, they have always been last minute, which sort of just puts us all in a scramble because we have to ensure that, one, it is acceptable material, that it is something that council is approving of being received and shown during a meeting, and that it's also safe for us to show and that it won't corrupt or harm any of our equipment. We also have updated the town council email to your current email, the .gov address. Again, just some consistency in our agenda where we are going to relabel that agenda section to morsel speaks, public comment. Councilmember Fetter. I'm on slide 25.
So did we, let me see.
So I sent it, I just wrapped up quickly, Rule 5.
Yes.
Yes.
Subsection C, I am not in favor of anticipating the time for a break in the first two hours. Want to keep it at 90 minutes.
Okay, so you are on, yeah, here on Rule 6. So really, we were just updating that language with what has generally been your practice.
Well, I don't think it should, should be our practice at all in general. I think we shouldn't be waiting that long. So I don't want to change the rules just because we haven't adhered, just because we've been waiting longer than 90 minutes, we shouldn't be doing that at all. So I don't want to change the rules.
Open to hear your opinions. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson and Councilmember Johnson.
I concur, 90 minutes is a good target because we have gone to two hours. And if you're sitting up there on camera with everybody, it is just, we can't move. And two hours is just two hours of sitting in one position and we need to get up and move around. So 90 minutes is a recommended break for most meetings and facilitators get trained on 90 minutes. So I think we should listen to the professionals and keep it where it is. Thanks.
Councilmember Johnson and Councilmember Robideau.
Honestly, I don't see a big difference between occurs approximately 90 minutes or the wording no later than two hours. That's kind of the, you're right in there and approximately 90 minutes could mean 95 minutes and no later than two hours could be 100 minutes. So I would just leave it alone. Approximately 90 minutes and we'll, we'll try to shoot for it when we can. That's all.
All right. We will maintain that language as is. So moving on to Rule 9, public records, we really just updated to clarify some statutory references here. And I'm going to kick it back to Brandon for remote participation.
All right, so remote participation is where I think we just want to have a little conversation because our practice does not necessarily always align with the policy. So just want you to help us understand what you would like to happen. Clarified in subsection A, that the notice that is required currently, which is 24 hours, gives staff the time for the prayer for the additional arrangements to allow for remote participation, getting the teams meeting set up, making sure that we have staff that will monitor that separately because it's not something the clerk realistically can do with other responsibilities. And then subsection A2 clarified that we are tracking, it wasn't in the rule, but we are tracking council member attendance, so you all have that if you need it. So just that was a clarification. So subsection A3, we added a new subsection, and this is our practice, we're just putting it into the rule. Council members participating remotely in a meeting are required to log in remotely at least 20 minutes prior to the start of the meeting to ensure the technology is functioning correctly to allow active participation. We're asking to do that now, we just want to sort of memorialize it in the rule. And then subsection A4, clarifying that if remote participation is not planned or requested prior to the meeting, it may not be practical to add a remote participation option immediately prior to or during the meeting. Just one of those if somebody thought they weren't going to be able to make it and then they got free at the last minute, it's really challenging to add a teams meeting and get that set up and do that, you know, if we don't have that 24-hour notice, understanding there's always exceptions, but added that language in there.
So I appreciate the thought about the remote meetings. I will say for the record, remote participation is a Herculean effort. There's technology issues, there's audio issues. When you have a hybrid meeting, it is not easy for the people in the room, it is not easy for the people that are offline, so, and out of the room. So that, I mean, this is one of those sticky things and I think that there are some carryovers from the COVID errors, you know, and I'd like to make some suggested adjustments to this language. First of all, council, you know, is tasked with attending meetings as part of the job that they signed up for. We are restricting remote participations to two meetings a calendar year. I personally do not care why you chose not to participate in person and want to participate remotely. I don't want to know your reason, I don't know, want to know where you are, I don't want anybody to record the reason that you aren't participating remotely because I think that is a privacy issue. So the section one is council members can remotely participate in up to two business meetings within one calendar year. Any further remote participation shall only be allowed upon a majority vote of the town council. And the remainder of section one, I think, should be stricken. Number two says council members may also participate remotely in work sessions. Then I would strike for the same reasons noted in section one above in accordance with remote participation guidelines. And then I would keep the remote participation in work sessions will not be counted against the two-meeting limit. This keeps the responsibility of the individual council member to two meetings to participate remotely and it also keeps their reasoning private. We do not request the reason for someone not to attend a meeting. So I think to be consistent, we should not request the reason for someone to participate remotely. Thank you.
Yeah, so I agree with Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson, particularly about the reason for being remote and the location. I think that's a personal issue. I don't want to tell people where I am or why, like if I'm, or if the reason I'm not there is because I'm sick, I mean, that's a HIPAA violation or that's my, that's private. So then the other comment I had was on this subsection A4. You know, I understand that you guys don't want to be blindsided at the last minute and find out someone's participating remotely. But I was just going to suggest, I know when, it doesn't have to be teams because I know when I first started, before I got elected and I first started coming to the council meetings, people participated remotely just over phone, had a conference speaker phone on the table and people participated. So I don't know why that would not be an option to simplify, you know, if someone for whatever reason was not going to be able to make it at the last minute, you don't necessarily have to add them to teams and go through all of that, you could just simply have them call in. Well, could have a conference call number.
I can clarify a little bit for you. We do have some updated technology. So we now have essentially internet-based phones. So we no longer have the ability to simply phone conference anyone in and everything is done via Wi-Fi. So that's why we have to defer to teams for remote participation because our phone and all of that connects through that option essentially. I'm not articulating that well, but that does give us the opportunity to allow whoever's participating remotely to appear virtually on the meeting and be heard because we can have audio or video or both. And so that allows us that opportunity by having you all participate via teams. And I, I agree with Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's initial comments that remote participation is a bit of a bear. It does involve multiple staff to set up and prepare and get things ready. And I think you all witnessed a little bit tonight, we have some challenges with some of the technology in this room, which we are, are working to update. IT is actively working on that. And hopefully we will be able to make some of that more efficient here in the near future. But we may just have to work through some bumps in the road.
I think the other reason, if I could, that we try to push to teams, two things. One is it gives you the opportunity to see what your council members are, your peers are seeing in the meeting. And then it also gives the message ability so that rather, because it becomes really difficult sometimes to get heard if other people are talking and you're remote, you know, because, and everybody else can use their flipper, right? And you can't do that if you're on a phone call, but if you're on teams, you can message staff and say, I have a comment. And then we can let the mayor know and that puts you into the cycle. So it just, it helps with that process.
Councilmember Robideau, Mayor Protam, Gervin.
I don't understand what is so complex about setting up a teams meeting. Like, I do it 200 times a day.
I don't think it's the setting up of the meeting that is complex. It's, quite honestly, the whole remote participation is challenging, I think, from start to finish. It's, quite honestly, the, the, the whole remote participation is challenging, I think, from start to finish. It is an extra step. It is generally requiring a, a second staff member to monitor that, to make sure we're not missing whoever's participating remotely. And then it's also just, we've all seen the challenges of, it's, I don't believe it's the same level of participation as opposed to being in the room. Um, so we just have a series of challenges with that. It's not the setting up of the teams meeting. I think it's that entire process of remote participation. We do that to the best of our ability.
So if, if I can as, as well offer a little bit more, we're also connecting that and, and aligning that with our, uh, our broadcast and with, uh, another system essentially. Um, so we're trying to make sure all of those pieces are interconnected appropriately so that we can then also ensure that your audio and your visual feed connects with what we have here in the room. Um, and so again, just making sure all of our technology connects so that we are being as transparent and open with the public for anyone who's not here participating in person and making sure that you still have that full experience and that the public still sees that full experience.
Okay. Um, also there was a, I don't see it now, but there was a reference to it, to notification having to be via email. And I've been texting for the past six years. Is that not acceptable? And if it is, could we update the?
We can.
Language for that. I don't see it now, but.
Question of just, yes, it's, it's just an adequate component of the policy. If everybody's good with that, we're, we're fine with that.
You guys are asking us twenty-four hour notice so that you can do, um, not to be hard, but this is the third time we had in this year, issues with the system. So can you guys also ensure it is all good before and not like a?
I think we can. Um, so tonight is.
Should actually.
Tonight is unique. Tonight's a power issue that we think is related to the construction. And so that's a, a one-off that we, we just.
No, I'm going to say, I, I, I remember we had one time issue with the system. That did not work. And one time we had issue, the feeds were not going.
Correct. So one of the things that, um, IT is working on is that we have spent money. We, we talked with you about this several months ago about closing out some of the ARPA funds. So there is a new audio system that's going to be installed in the room. I think we're going to do that at the end of April. Um, so to be ready for the, the first May meeting.
My, my thing is, great, we are getting all the new system, but at least test it before the meeting.
Well, we always test before a meeting. It's just the unknown challenges of what happens. And, you know, everything was working tonight except we found out at five, you know, when we were testing at five thirty, that there was no power to the dais. And so you, you saw us scrambling on that. And that was just, we haven't dealt with that before. But yes, thank you.
Councilmember Johnson.
So Erin already kind of really answered what I was going to say. I think, I, I hear you, you know, I, I'm on calls all the time, Zoom meetings, team meetings. Um, but this is a public meeting. So we talk about the public perspective. I think, um, it's important to remember this is a public meeting where the public should be able to hear us, even us in the room. I'm still getting complaints about not being able to hear people who are physically here. Forget if you're remote. So, um, I think we all need to, to remember that, um, that we have a responsibility to make sure the public can hear and understand our positions and decisions. And so, um, I just want to reinforce that. What the, the, the language in, and, and I agree with the, um, you could text or email, but I do think at a courtesy, um, we need to give our staff twenty-four hour notice. Um, I, I understand stuff happens sometimes, sure, but, but I think at a courtesy, they need twenty-four hours notice. I will tell you, I am, I try to reserve my Tuesdays because I know how many phone calls I get, whether it's from people in this room or the public because they know it's, or even applicants. Um, so I, I, um, I know how last minute stuff is on my end. I can't imagine how last minute stuff is on the staff's end. So I think at a courtesy, we need to give them a twenty-four hour notice. And I think that's fair. Um, you know, for the most part, we should know twenty-four hours before a meeting if we're going to have to be remote or not. Again, I realize stuff happens, life happens, but, so that's my kind of two cents on all that. The, the, the wording in here about you had, that, um, for, for a council member to participate remotely, they had to assert at least one of the following, I, I, I don't want, I don't want to share that publicly if that was the intent of that. I, I think that's nobody's business, quite frankly. If I'm in the hospital or if I'm, you know, um, with a loved one who's, you know, in the hos- or whatever. So, um, and I'm trying to be remote to, to, you know, to, to, um, live up to the obligation I have for the public. I'm going to do that to the best I can. So I kind of agree with that. I would hope that those are the reasons, um, that, that, that we would each choose. But, um, I don't need to hear that either, quite frankly, from each other. So.
Is there, are there others that agree with that? I think we specifically heard three. Just want to make sure we have some consensus around that. Thank you.
And if, if I can add too, none of that is ever shared.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
That's not included in minutes or anything like that. Those are just what we learned as best practices when we originated this policy with you all as sort of the general reasons that anyone would need to participate remotely.
I'm okay with keeping, honest, I don't, I heard others.
And just sharing for, for context.
I'm okay with keeping that in the policy. I'm not okay with sharing it. So if it was just for public consumption and for our consumption of future council members' consumption, I'm all right with that, but, um, I wouldn't share that. And, and to this, where we are, I, I don't remember that. That's a recent phenomenon. Why do we have to tell where we are? I don't understand the reason for that.
It's, it's actually been in your policy. We have not consistently.
There you go.
We've not consistently adhered to it.
Okay.
Um, and I, so I'm sitting here racking my brain, trying to remember if it's also just a best practice or if it's a, a something else. I'll have to go back and research a little bit. Um, that essentially if you all are here in person, they know you're here.
Right.
If you're participating remotely, there was a reason we had to include it in the policy originally. I just don't recall. So let us do a little bit of research on that and we can, we can bring that back to you.
Yes, sir.
I, I, I remember the reason for the two meetings was obviously, but I remember Martha distinctly saying, if it is a work commitment, that you have to, you will not be there more than two as long as it's, people have to go out of town, you know, that's call of duty that we get. So I think that two should be exceptional to, if it is a work call. I'm going to say because I can say I'll be present, but I have no idea. Like if I had to go to Europe or I cannot be on that meeting. But I'll try every bit to either remotely or be present where usually I am. But I think, uh, that work commitment was always a clause which was kept at one point of time, I remember.
Are you talking about a work commitment allowing more than two remote participations?
Yes.
I don't, I don't recall that in my time. I, I think, you know, the idea with the remote was to sort of, for those special exceptions, that, that there would be an allowance for that. I've not been a part of any conversation that was, that work was also an excuse for that or a reason. Sorry, not an excuse, but a reason for that. I, I think there's also recognition that council members just occasionally are going to meet, miss a meeting. I mean, everybody's going to make their best effort, um, but occasionally you're going to miss a meeting and, and that's going to happen. So I think that, that's where that comes from. Now again, if you, as a, as a group, want to talk about more than two remote participations, that's, it's your rules. Uh, we would certainly try to work with you. Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson.
Okay. Um, I wanted to respond to Councilmember Fender's comment about the location. I'm not in favor of the location either. You're either in your seat or you're not. Um, it's very simple and it's sometimes a safety issue as to where you might be. Um, so that's a privacy issue. I don't like the language of what is currently drafted that talks that you must have one of these reasons in order to participate remotely. It's like if you don't have one of the stated reasons, then you can't participate. I think the intent is we want to engage with each other. We want to have deliberations and we want as much engagement with the council, um, as we can. And sometimes we just can't be here physically, but the goal is to have a carrot, not a stick. And I read the reasons that you can only participate remotely because of these reasons as a stick. That we're saying, you know, don't even bother coming unless you have one of these reasons because we're not going to allow you to participate in our meetings. Let, let's just cut it off at, you get two meetings a year. It's up to you. You're an adult. If there's exceptions, then, you know, you can appeal to the council to see if there's an exception, whether it's work or personal, you know, um, that's up to you.
Thank you.
I, I was up and down.
Okay.
Councilmember Robati.
I'm sorry. If you miss more than two meetings, you need council approval. I find that to be frankly somewhat absurd because I, like, I'm trying to think of a situation where Donna needs to miss a third meeting and I'm going to vote against that. And I just, I just think that, that the supposition that we're all adults, we understand that we took an oath to be here. We're going to do our best to meet that obligation as we always have done, all of us, ever since we got elected. I just, I, I just think that's just, to me, that's just adding a layer of complexity onto the situation that it doesn't require, you know? So I think the, obviously, the goal would be to miss zero meetings. And then subsequent to that, the goal would be to miss less than two. But I mean, it, I don't, I don't know how to put this nicely, but if I need to miss three, if I'm traveling for work, if my kid is sick, if somebody's in the hospital, I, then I'm going to miss three. And I wouldn't, I frankly, wouldn't expect any of my council members to vote against that. So why, I, I don't really get that whole, I don't really get what that's adding to the, to the situation.
When, when the policy was adopted, um, I think that there were a couple of thoughts around that. One was to not make remote participation just an okay thing to occur as often as it needed to. I'm, I'm not questioning why it would be done. I'm just saying, I think that was the philosophy was that, that council at that time felt that the, the expectation was to be in the room for the most effective meetings and recognize that there could be exceptions, but it shouldn't be a, take as many exceptions as you need and let it feel like it was just something that could be done as opposed to, it should be an exception. And if it's more than, as, as the policy is written, two, then there should be some discussion around that. But that's where it was. I'm not saying that's where it has to be, but that's, I think, some of what the impetus was at that point, was to not let it become too commonplace.
Yeah, to add on to that, to Satish's comment about wanting to have an exception for work, I think the, the point that we've been talking about, the remote participation being allowed beyond two requires a majority vote, I think that accounts for that because like, as Councilmember Robati said, I don't think any of us are going to vote no, you know, you can't be remote. Um, but I do, I do agree that I do, I think at that point needs to be in the policy just to what Brandon was saying to, to, so it doesn't become this runaway train where participating remote is, is the exception or is the rule and not the exception.
Thank you.
I'm going to, did, um, well, Councilmember Fender said.
Okay. Let's, let's, let's bring you back something then. We need to have some clarification. Thank you. All right. Um, so we're going to move on. Um, again, council member can't participate unless there's an in-person forum. You can't make forum if you're remote. You can't vote if you're remote. I think that's what we've done. It just, it wasn't in there. So just trying to be clear. Um, so again, remote participation, I think we really talked through most of this. We talked through the written notice. Um, we'll make texting accessible, acceptable, sorry. Uh, talked about the vote and talked about the identification and we'll, we'll pull that out. I think it sounds like there's consensus around that. So we've dealt with that. We'll move on. Um, motion five to suspend the rules. Again, just removed a mayor reference. Uh, Rule nineteen, just put the rules in, in numerical order. Uh, adoption of ordinances, one of, I think this is my last one. Um, again, removed a mayor reference, uh, clarifying language that a simple majority vote is four. And then added clarifying language that a super majority vote is five. Um, doesn't change anything, just it wasn't spelled out that way. So just for clarification, I think makes it easier. Erin, take us home.
All right. Oh, sorry.
So I think that what that's saying is that if, if, my understanding is anytime and frankly, Lori may help us. Sorry, I missed that. Lori may help us, is that if it specifically calls for a super majority, it's requiring a super majority of the full council as opposed to a majority could be. I think you still have to have, I would argue, you still have to have four. The whole not in the number of members present.
Yes. Correct.
Councilmember Johnson.
So I'm sorry, rule, tell me where Rule fifteen is then? Why don't I?
I'm sorry?
There's a Rule fifteen? Oh, here we go. Thank you.
That's your remote participation.
Yeah, that was remote participation. We had moved past that.
Yeah, but that, what, what is, uh, I'm confused of the wording in here. It talks about all council members may participate remotely.
Where, where are you at?
I'm on, I'm actually in the documents.
Okay. What, what page on?
I'm on page, uh, twenty-four. Where you have in green, it says Rule fifteen, remote participation.
So that, that's in, that, that just got moved up from where it was.
So that's the old Rule nineteen? No, I'm not, I'm.
No, that's Rule fifteen. It was just in a different order in the document. We just put them into numerical order to make it easier to follow them.
So we always had the ability to have a remote meeting? Am I reading that right?
It's part of a, it's part of a virtual meeting. If there's a virtual meeting that's scheduled, you can all participate remotely as part of a virtual meeting during, during an emergency.
Okay. Thank you. Okay. 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 This is not just whenever we want.
No, no, that's, that is referencing state of emergency when a virtual meeting is allowed.
For a minute. Got it. Got it. Okay. Thank you.
Yep, correct.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I am going to pick us up here at, uh, Rule twenty-five, request for ceremonial documents. That's your proclamations, letters of recognition, things of that sort. Uh, so here, very minor subsection updates to remove that specific separate reference, uh, to the mayor, where it would say mayor and council. Uh, so this really just includes the mayor as a member of council. So there's no, uh, confusion there. Um, here, just a little bit of discussion we'd like to have with you all. Uh, this rule was modified back in, uh, I want to say April of two thousand and twenty-four. Further clarifying that process, we're requesting those ceremonial documents presenting, reading them. Uh, the proclamations, resolutions of support, letters of support. Um, there's been some additional discussion, uh, amongst council and with staff about that process, particularly the time commitment during, uh, your meetings to reading those, presenting those, sharing of those. There's also been some discussion about the administrative reports and those presentations and that time commitment. Um, so we really just want to ensure we're following council's guidance and hearing from you all. Um, do you want to discuss this rule further and leave it as is? Continuing to allow staff to present and you all read up to three proclamations per meeting, presenting them when there's someone present. That could be staff, could be a member of the public. Uh, do you want to modify that rule to, uh, either only allow two proclamations per meeting, uh, rely on those existing guidelines, um, and staff can, uh, order those as necessary? rely on those existing guidelines, and staff can order those as necessary? Continued options, we have an approved, not necessarily approved, but a list of proclamations that occurs annually, so we can only bring forward those that are requested or fall aligned with that list if pre-approved by council. We can transition to only summarizing proclamations rather than reading those in full, transition to including proclamations as consent items or any other suggestions that you all may have. And I'm not sure who had their card up first, councilmember Fender or councilmember Robati?
It was definitely Donna.
Okay, councilmember Fender.
Okay.
Oh, I'm sorry.
No, I'm left over.
My, my thoughts are, I don't think we want to include proclamations as consent items. And I mean, my preference would not be to summarize them either, because a lot of times a full proclamation has some good information in there. I would be in favor of limiting it to two proclamations per meeting. I mean, we have two meetings a month, so that gives us the opportunity for four proclamations for the month. Those are my thoughts, my input.
Councilmember Robati?
I think that, I think that if there's a member of, of the public here to receive the proclamation, that it's fine to, you know, call them up to receive it and even to have them say a few words. I don't necessarily think that, I don't think that the staff receiving proclamations are like dedicating them to the staff. You know, that, that feels a little bit redundant to me. I think that we could dispense with that. You know, I think that we could read the proclamation and then nobody has to receive it. I mean, we've, we used to do that all the time. I don't know when we started, like, having to always present them to somebody. But if there's, you know, if there's somebody here from the public or from an organization related to the proclamation to receive it, I think that's fine. But I don't think every proclamation needs a recipient. And then I agree also with all of Donna's comments about what we definitely don't want to do.
Councilmember Skorgans-Johnson?
So I like the suggestion of two proclamations a meeting. If someone is here to receive it, that's great. If they're not, then just read it. I do have a question about proclamations that are provided outside of a council meeting. Does that, any of this language pertain to those? Because sometimes we do offer a proclamation at an event or to an individual based on a celebratory kind of honor. And so this is only applicable to proclamations during business meetings, correct?
Yes, so what we are, well, specifically what we are looking for guidance on is how you want proclamations presented, shared during council meetings.
During council meetings. So there still is flexibility if we had a proclamation that was presented outside of a council meeting, that, you know, that's a possibility.
There is guidance in there for that as well.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Yep.
So I'm good with limiting the number, especially of those that are being read. I'm also fine with just putting them in the agenda and having them out there for the public to read on their own if they want to and not, not have them read out loud. I, I think that's fine. Do we, how could the public, do we have a place on the website where all these proclamations are listed so the public can go see them?
So, yes, and, we are working to update and bring current our public records portal that's on our website. It was previously housed in Laserfish. It's currently housed in Docu相. It, just some challenges with the, the search features on that. So that's something else that we're working through and also just trying to catch up a little bit with that as we've had some capacity challenges and, and transition and staffing in the clerk's team, so.
Okay. Yeah, I, I honestly, I think I said this during the retreat too. I, I know there's lots of towns that don't read proclamations anymore, they just list them. And then they're there for public consumption and, and that's, I'd be fine with that, quite frankly. And to the, to the, to the proclamations for staff, does staff care? I mean, we could, do they care if it's done at a public meeting or could we do it during the day when they don't have to stay late and we hand them a proclamation? Is that important to them? We could make that kind of accommodation.
They would probably like that.
I think the majority of staff do appreciate that. I think you make a good point that you would get more attendance from some departments if it was not at 7:30 or 8 o'clock at night.
Well, right. And why, why couldn't we go to them, to that department to say, thank you, and here's a proclamation thanking you and, and all the work you do and some cupcakes and some cookies? I, I, I think, yeah, I don't, and then they have to sit here and wait until we get to them.
Yes. Great suggestion.
Mayor Colley? I'm, I'm so sorry. Were you finished?
No, I think I'm done. I'll come back if I...
Mayor Colley? I apologize.
I'm okay with leaving it up to three. I mean, there's some meetings we don't have any, especially if we're thinking about maybe only reading them. If we have staff who's interested in sharing something with the public, like Creek Week, this would be a good one to actually keep, read and have someone up there. So I think it can be a lot of hybrid. I think if we're going to have it in the meeting, I'm not a big fan of summarizing it, so either read it or just leave it on the agenda rather than that middle ground. But I think this is going to be something that evolves. I think the idea is that we're just trying to not use up a lot of time, but this is a really special occasion for some people to come and receive a proclamation from their, for their organization, for example. So I don't want to lose that for the community. This is the one time that some community members will come to a meeting. Proclamations make it special. So.
Any other time or councilmember, any thoughts differently? Good.
I'm, I'm fine with limiting them. I, I like the idea of doing them with staff if they don't have to wait, but I did think, I do think it's important to recognize the staff, but it's important for all the work they do to have them shine a little bit. Sometimes it's good when the public is here, but, you know, fire, police, those kinds of things. But I think I'm, I'm fine with reading. It's hard to monitor how many you want to put on the consent agenda. And I do think there's an efficiency perspective. If you have, you know, three to four proclamations, you bring them up here, you present them, you're shaving off, it's about an hour, hour of, of time in the meeting. So, you know, to the extent we can be more efficient, but it's hard. If you tell one person, we're, we're just going to not present, then another organization's going to want to come and there's so many. So that's hard to police it.
Okay.
We kick it back to Brandon.
So closed sessions.
Regarding the comments, when people come and talk, I've seen sometimes people go three, four minutes. Okay, so how do we have that early on to tell, hey, if you're coming, especially outside organization, they don't know. Yeah, they do not know, like, you know, they're on our time or something. I've seen some people like go on and on and on. So I think it would be good to tell them if we are calling them to keep it...
We put time a little, that's easy. That's easy. Yeah.
Yeah.
We can do that. Okay. All right, closed sessions. Just added some language in there again. This is the practice, but it's come up before, it's just not in there, that advisory committee members are not employees for the purpose of a closed session. We've had that once or twice. That, that does not go to closed session. General statute just doesn't allow for it. C5, just some clarification on our current process around who reviews closed session minutes and just including the manager, the attorney and the clerk prior to any unsealing at the end of each calendar year. We go through that. So talk briefly about, in 2018, you all adopted a separate policy titled Town Council Policy for Reviewing and Unsealing Closed Session Minutes. And there were some things going on there that, that warranted that and I think answered or addressed a, a concern. My concern now is there's some redundancy and some inconsistency between rule 26 and this policy. They, they don't align with current practice. So current practice right now is that typically the town attorney, the town clerk and the town manager are involved in drafting and reviewing closed session minutes. And then once they are agreed as accurate, they're shared with the mayor and the mayor pro tem. That's not what's necessarily reflected in consistently in both documents. So just some examples of things that don't line up. I'm not going to, you know, read those to you, but some examples. We'll go to the next one, Erin. So the, the question's for you is, does the full council want to review all closed session minutes and offer edits prior to them being sealed? Or are you comfortable with staff and the mayor and mayor pro tem doing that? And then if you do want to approve closed session minutes prior to them being sealed, again, are you comfortable with the mayor and the mayor pro tem being involved with that process? I don't think there is. I think that was a, I think that was a, as I read it, a typo, that we didn't eliminate the second version of that question, sorry.
The first one says review and the second one says approve.
Oh, you're right. You're right. Thank you.
Review and offer edits and the next one is approve.
So do you want to see it at all, to offer any edits? Or do you want to rely on staff, including myself, the clerk and the town attorney, reviewing them, whoever the attorney is that's involved? And then they go to the mayor and mayor pro tem to sort of bless that we agree on behalf of council that they're accurate? And then again, also, do you want to ultimately approve them? Or are you comfortable doing that when they're unsealed ultimately at the end of a year, not necessarily that year? Because it's, it's unclear between rule and policy.
Okay, so I'm fine with you reviewing the way it is. I, I think that's fine. Approving, don't we, don't we approve? I guess that one caught me off guard.
You don't right now. I mean, they're, they're presented, the mayor and the mayor pro tem, I mean, essentially approved them by saying, yes, this is accurate.
Okay, okay.
As opposed to it going to everybody.
Okay, it's not an actual vote.
Correct. No, it's, it's more a blessing than a vote.
We're, we're good with this. I'm good with that.
Mayor, mayor pro tem?
Yes.
Anybody else feel differently? Great. So quorum, we just removed a mayor reference, public hearings. It, it, just clarified, it didn't say it in there that if the mayor's not present, the presiding member will do that. So again, just for consistency, that's in other rules. Rule 30 on minutes, there was just something that said town council, she just said town clerk and just added a reference back to rule 26 because the minutes talks about closed session minutes, just like rule 26 does. And I guess my other question, going back real quick to the closed session minutes, are you okay if we merge the policy into the rule and just maintain one document? The policy's really somewhat redundant. You can always update your rule. But again, my preference, my recommendation to you would be let us put it into the rules. I don't think, we, we haven't changed that policy in, in quite some time, so I think that the elements of it can be incorporated into the rules. Are, are you okay? Right now, there's a separate policy. There's rule 26.
Right.
And then there's an additional separate policy that's in an appendix to the rules. I would just like to take that.
I would like to see that before I agree that, because I, I know you're very familiar with what you just said, but...
We'll, we'll bring you back an example of what, what it would look like blended into the rule. And then if you're comfortable with that, we can do that. And then if you're not, we can still show you what the policy says.
Right, because I, I would like to see both documents.
Okay.
And then the, the suggestion.
It's, it's currently attached as an appendix to your rules of procedure, but Brandon's correct, it's not been, the policy for closed session minutes has not been updated since it originated. So it's a little bit outdated and then there is a rule within your policy that very much reflects it at a high level. But yes, we can, we can certainly bring back some draft language for that.
Thank you. All right.
Sorry, sorry.
Sorry, sorry.
Put it in one place. It doesn't need to be in that appendix, one place.
There shouldn't be, there shouldn't be two places to update the same information.
Okay, we'll bring you that back, show you what that would look like and then we can get consensus around that. Rule 31 is a mayor reference. Rule 34 is just reference that staff also takes the same approach. If it's not in the policy, we file Robert's Rules of Order. Again, just for social media policy, added the town's YouTube account that didn't exist the last time we did this and added a staff email. There's a section there about how to reach out to the town. It includes the town council at, and then we also just added a, the public information at, and that reaches staff. Again, just transparency. And this, this goes into the policy for the unsealing of the closed mission, closed session minutes. And, and we'll bring this back to you as, as what it would look like in the rules and can still show you what a separate policy is. Just some, some cleanup there. That's, that's what we have for you tonight. Well, at this point, I'm guessing not, but I, I will say, so our, our intention then would be to, to get some updates done. We'll bring this back to you for March 25th, less than further discussion. And then ideally, we'll be on the same page. We'll bring them back April 8th for adoption. If not, we'll come back and talk one more time the 8th and then get it adopted. I do want to say thank you. I know this was a, a drag a little bit, but it's important. It's important that we go through these once in a while and make sure they're accurate and reflect our practice and our, in accordance with the general statute. So thank you for the feedback and we will bring this back March 25th.
Okay.
No, sir.
Okay, we're going to be heading into closed sessions, so at this time, we'd like to thank you for attending this meeting of the Morrisville Town Council. We hope you plan to join us again. Feel, please feel free to email your town council members at towncouncil@morrisvillnc.gov or visit www.morrisvillnc.gov/council for additional contact information. We have one closed session this evening to discuss a personnel matter. Thank you to everyone for watching this evening. And this is the end of our public business. I would ask for a motion to enter into closed session.
Mayor, counsel pursuant to North Carolina statute 143.31811a6, I move that we go into closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
I have a motion from councilmember Aou, a second from councilmember Skorgans-Johnson. All those in favor of entering closed session, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. It is 9:48. We are in closed session.